I now call this Snoqualmie City Council meeting to order. All please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Holloway, can you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Last, the city clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilmember Ross?
Here.
Councilmember Holloway?
Here.
Councilmember Mayhew?
Here.
Councilmember Sundwell?
Here.
Councilmember...
Mayor Larson?
I am here. All right, may I have a motion to excuse Councilmember Mundon and Jeans from the meeting tonight? They both indicated or asked for an excuse tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion, a second, to excuse Councilmembers Jeans and Mundon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. May I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Motion, a second.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve tonight's agenda. Is there any discussion? And I just want to add real quick that during committee of the whole, and please remind me, I'll ask Bob Larson to do a quick update to the council on the issue, on the ethics review, also on the events coordinator contract and the contractor, or to bring a contractor in to do overall review on controls and policies. Okay, any other discussion, folks? Oh, and I'm sorry, we will also be having an executive session regarding potential litigation, or a second executive session as well. Any other discussion or issues? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We now move on to citizens' comments. At this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on an item that is not on the agenda today? Richard?
I'm Richard Sheal, 6701 West Crestview Loop, Southeast. I'd just like to point out to the commission an item that is currently on the consent agenda that you may wish to break out separately. This is relating to Resolution 1418 on canceling certain city-paid warrants, which I had previously just assumed was kind of a, just a little housekeeping thing. But when I looked at it, I saw that one of the warrants is for almost a half million dollars listed as partial duplicate payment, which seems like an awfully large thing to have an error, a clerical error presumably. And it doesn't say why there was a partial duplicate payment or who it was to. So I would just suggest that this may be something worth inquiring about. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sheal. Anyone else? Fuzzy?
Fuzzy Fletcher, 7749 Maple Avenue, Southeast, council mayor. I specifically wanted to come up to congratulate Mayor Larson on the victory in the recent election. I know they're not done certifying everything, but congratulations on a good win. And since I took the time and the energy to come up here and challenge him from this podium here, I thought it only fair I come up and congratulate him. So congratulations and to all of you involved in the process. I'm happy. I think it was good. We got people engaged. We got 50% of the voters to come out and vote one way or the other. Some cities didn't have that luxury, and so I'm pleased, all in all, that it is, came out the way it came out, and away we go. So congratulations and thank you all.
Thank you, Fuzzy. Very gracious of you. I appreciate your jumping into. I didn't appreciate necessarily during the race, it made me work my tail off, but...
(laughing).
It was...
(inaudible).
Yeah, thank you, Becky. It was, yeah, but reinvigorating, and I agree with you, just it was kind of fun to see how many people just got very, very engaged in the civics and life of the city. As I've always said, I would rather take that passion and day over apathy, so, but thank you for your work. All right, is there anybody else from the public that... Yes, oh, I'm sorry, Peggy, I'll get you next. Dave?
David Eifert, 6819 409th Avenue, Southeast. I just wanted to come before you and let you know that my experience of working with Lizzie Billington, I know that there's a boatload of controversy surrounding her right now for various reasons, most of which I'm not actually aware of. I've heard about Facebook pages which are heated, and I've never seen them, didn't even know about them until a couple of weeks ago. But within my experience of Lizzie, working with her solely from the perspective of a business member of the historic district, she's been hardworking, she's been consistent, prompt, present, and has done about 95% of the work that's gotten done. I wish that we merchants had done more of it, but she's taken us quite a long way, and I appreciate her work.
Dave, and what's your role with the merchants association? Now it's becoming more...
I'm on the board of the merchants association.
Yeah, are you one of the officers then?
We're a little bit before that, that point.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment at this time? Oh, I'm sorry, Peggy, yes.
Now, I just sent an email to all of you just before the meeting.
I'm sorry, you can state your name and...
Oh, Peggy Shepherd, 6701 West Crestview Loop, Southeast. So the meeting that started at 5:30 wasn't on the city's calendar tonight, and I think that it's really critical that that information be available so that we can get optimized public engagement. And I think it was really important for everyone to be at every single public meeting, having to do with a budget that's going to incorporate the largest debt the city's ever engaged in. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to comment this time? All right, seeing no one else move forward, we will move on to...
Mayor, can I ask a question about one of the comments?
Yes, sir.
Is that appropriate? So why wasn't it on the calendar? Just an oversight?
I don't know. Jody's not here, she would usually...
I understand people make mistakes of it.
The agenda was posted, and it was on the agenda, I believe. I think she's talking about the civic calendar.
The start time was not posted on the calendar?
I'm going to ask everybody, try to speak into the microphone so folks can hear. Oh, John, go ahead.
So there was an error in communication, so I dropped the ball. It was on the, it was on the calendar, but it was noted at 7 o'clock, and it was linked to the certain current council agenda, which also noted it... The council shows it, shows the meeting starting at 7, but underneath where the council's, the topics start, it shows it at 5:30. I didn't catch that, and I didn't send it out, as I usually do. And it was on the calendar, but it wasn't marked at the proper time. In general, I communicate that all a lot better tonight. I didn't do as well.
Thank you, Joan, for owning that.
Okay.
That answers my question.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll move on to the public hearing's presentations, proclamations, and appointments. At this time, the public hearing regarding the 2018 revenue sources and the levying of 2018 property taxes is now open. Gwen, do you have the signup sheets back there? Oh, I'm sorry, we got them here.
Yeah.
Okay, Peggy Shepherd?
In general, I've been looking at some of the budget information, and I find it to be not very descriptive of what it's, the money is for. And I'd like to have a lot more information regarding some of the line items.
Well, as an incoming council member, you will have copious opportunities to meet with staff and start getting up to speed on those if you'd like, Peggy, so, yeah, do invite you to come in and...
One of the problems I'm having, though, when I ask for information, I'm getting pushback of not, please don't ask us questions, from the city staff.
Is it in the last week or so, or what?
In general.
Yeah, well, there's, there's a difference between asking public records requests and being a, being a council member-elect. Now that you're a council member-elect, it's clearly understood that you will be making decisions regarding all these, so you won't have to be going through public records requests to have access to all that information. You will be a trustee of the organization, so...
I'm not sure how that applies to what I just said, though.
I'd be happy, Mayor, to meet and discuss. I'm not sure what she's talking about. I don't know of any pushback whatsoever that staff's given anybody about any records requests or documents. Be happy to talk about it, though.
I do have a list of things that I've asked for that I haven't gotten yet.
So maybe it might help to clarify, because I didn't understand the difference until a few weeks ago when I was talking with Jody. So there's public records requests, whether they're made with a form or not, we're supposed to reply whether they use the form or not, it's public records request.
You do.
That is very different than a information request, is that right, Mr. Sherbank?
Correct.
And the city's under no obligation to fulfill information requests, those, as I understand it, are as staff time allows, because theoretically someone could, every day, send in a list of 100 questions, right, that they might have about the city?
Right.
And that aren't related to asking for documents that are held by the city, right? And I have no idea what Peggy's referring to here in terms of what has or has not been given, but there is a big difference between a public records request and requesting answers to questions.
Or requesting information that we don't, that doesn't necessarily exist unless we collate. For example, if somebody asks the question, "I want to know all the data of all the Snoqualmie residents that have season pass, ski passes up at Summit, but we've never done a collation or a collection of that data somehow." You know, a council might decide to do that research and data, but unless, you know, we don't, there's not a legal obligation to provide the data. So numerous times the requests you've made, Peggy, have been for studies or for information that doesn't exist on a piece of paper, we'd have to actually take staff time to create that. And it's not, it's not fair for any citizen to come in and constantly demand that the staff and all the, all the resources of the city, at the expense of all other citizens and their needs, stop and constantly create information and studies for a resident or a citizen. But again, now that you're a council member, that's a different matter. Again, as one council member, you can't necessarily say, "I want a new study that hasn't been done before." You're going to have to get at least the majority of your fellow council members to agree to expend staff resources and money on, on that information if you, if you want us to gather it and find it.
So I think a significant number of my requests have not been of that category, that I have not gotten responses to.
So Bob, will you...
Absolutely, yes. I'd like to know more about that.
She's in spin-up mode, let's help her spin up and find out what's there, what's not there, what we need to do for to get her, she's better. Educated, all of us are educated than not.
Come on, Brian.
Sorry, Fuzzy, I didn't see the...
(inaudible).
No, I was just asking Bob to engage. I mean, it's better that we, as a council, are, and Peggy included, are educated on these things, and let's...
I'd be happy to engage.
Let's lend a hand.
All right, thank you, Peggy. Anything else on this item?
I have, I need information, or I can't even ask questions, I don't have enough information. So, yeah.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this item in the public hearing? Mr. Sheal?
Well, he's coming to the podium. Matt, is there a way of turning up the sensitivity on these mics? Because they still, we still struggle with making sure we speak into them.
We've got a little angle on our cord.
I can pull mine towards me, I'm just asking if we can turn the sensitivity up on the mics.
Andy, are we using a different mic system for the streaming versus the room here?
No, we use the same...
Okay, so it helps on the online streaming for people to be speaking to the microphones as much as in the room here, correct? All right.
For the most part, I can hear most everybody. It's pretty good volume, I realize.
All right, well...
I apologize, I just wanted to...
Mayor, the other thing is we have to make sure we have a balance, otherwise it could be some feedback from electronic devices that you might have.
I'm not thinking you'll solve it tonight, that was just a fix-it-for-going-forward comment before I forgot.
I'll try to do better, I'm just not used to people telling me they can't hear me. Move on.
Sorry, Mayor.
They want to hear you, but...
Just a question, on this topic, because I've heard this topic brought up in other meetings as well, the topic being that requests, you know, it's a different topic. I'm trying to put two things together that don't go together, so, never mind.
Well, let's do this, if you, council, could remind me during committee of the whole, let's kind of bring this up as a discussion item, talk about this public records request or other issues.
Well, right, and the thing I want to specifically get at, that I was sort of putting together with that, is this idea of citizen concerns that may come into the city and how those are then sort of reported out, how citizens can see how those items are resolved. And I think that, I don't know if this needs to be assigned to a committee to look into, but I think this is an area that could use some more work.
Let's bring it up in our committee of the whole.
Okay.
Mr. Sheal, thank you for your patience.
You're welcome. So again, Richard Sheal. So I would just like to add one follow-on comment to Peggy Shepherd's statements that, although you did point out that now that she's a, an incoming council member, that she'll have access to additional resources, but...
Mr. Sheal, did you have any questions on the public hearing on the 2018 revenue sources?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't, I forgot that we were on that.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, the public hearing on that right now.
Apologize.
All right, sorry about that, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak to the 2018 revenue sources and the levying of the 2018 property taxes? All right, seeing no one else come forward, public hearing is now closed. Public hearing regarding the 2017, 2018 mid-biennium budget modifications is now open. Ms. Shepherd, you were on the signup sheet. Peggy Shepherd? Again, if you could just speak to the 2017, 18 mid-biennium budget modifications.
Well, I have to agree with what Brian was saying as far as trying to understand when you're making adjustments, what that adjustment applies to, and when something's new, when, when did it become new? As far as what's added to the budget, I think it's very hard for us to see what's happening as far as what the beginning number is, what the ending, what the resulting number is, and, and how that adds and subtracts. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing no one else move forward. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, I appoint Luke Maruziak to the Planning Commission, position number five, for a term ending March 31, 2019. Council may have a confirmation of...
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Luke Maruziak to the Planning Commission, as stated. Is there any discussion, council? Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? Luke, did you want to make a campaign pitch prior to action?
(laughing).
(inaudible). I look forward to working with the city's leaders to help it evolve and provide it all the information I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and appreciate you stepping up. All right, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried, congratulations. Look, look forward to working with you on the Planning Commission. And thank you for your work on the Economic Development Commission to date. I gotta, I don't know if you can keep serving on both, I guess, but we'll, I don't know what your intentions are, but we appreciate you doing that anyway.
Next one, sir.
Good, all right. I was requested by Mayor Pro Tim Jeans, who could not make it here tonight, to make the following council liaison appointments in his absence. I appoint Catherine Ross as liaison to the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee, and Jim Mayhew as liaison to the City of Snoqualmie Human Services Advisory Committee. And actually, before I make the motion, or ask for a motion, Jim, did you, were you not interested in being an alternate on the SCA pick? Or anyone else?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to perhaps play that role? Or maybe Bob Jeans, I guess, he's been doing that, I don't know if he wants to continue doing that stuff. Often good to have a tag team where someone can step in if another member can't make it, so...
He's not here, so I think it's probably good for him to do it.
Good, well, although I'm tempted to make that formal.
Why don't we talk to him in F and A?
I think we better talk to him first.
Careful what meeting you don't show up to.
With those appointments as stated, then there's a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, to confirm as stated. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed below will be enacted by one motion. Action items include minutes for the October 23, 2017 regular city council meeting, and the November 6, 2017 special council meeting, and the October 30, 2017 special council meeting. It also includes approval of warrants, as stated in the agenda packet. Other approvals include Agenda Bill 17156, approval of Lodging Tax Advisory Committee recommendation for 2018 funding allocations, Agenda Bill 17155, Resolution 1418 canceling city-paid warrants, Agenda Bill 17157, Resolution 1420 authorizing investment of city of Snoqualmie monies in the local government investment pool, and updating authorization forms.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda as stated. Is there any discussions?
So Bob Larson, can you address the 432,000, or how financed that?
Sure, I am very familiar with it. There was a, a duplicate request on a partial payment that we received from a contract vendor. We did not catch it originally, we did obviously catch it before the checks were run, but once it's been put into the system, we have to back it out. So we had to request the contractor to take the invoice back, if you will, and submit a new invoice showing the amount we originally had paid on part of that original invoice. And they made that correction and brought it back in. It's certainly a large amount, but it never, the, the check wasn't cashed, obviously, but we had to bring it back out of the system, so, and they, we've got it caught up since then. I know I also want the council aware of another one, just more recently, last week, I believe, another payment request on a contract that was a partial, the invoice was not accurate. We actually sent that one back and asked the contractor to revise it accordingly. It does happen sometimes, I can't, I can't recall the last time it was a six-figure piece, but, but we have controls in place to identify that.
Who was the contractor?
That I'm not familiar with. Dan, you remember the name of the contractor?
RH2.
RH2, it was, I believe, the construction management for the utilities, for the wastewater treatment plant project. There are site managers for that.
So they billed us twice, and then we paid them twice?
They billed us, original invoice, they billed us, we paid for part of that because it was under a partial payment, and then they billed back that same amount on a subsequent invoice. So they added it to a second invoice after that, so it obviously increased the amount. We backed out the 400 and some thousand dollars.
So is it correct to say that once you have cut the check, whether the check leaves your possession or not?
This one...
You have to treat it as a canceling of warrants?
Yes, this one actually did leave our possession, it arrived at the company, they caught it, obviously, we caught it about the same time, and they returned the check, and they submitted a new invoice.
But there's probably something wrong with our process in that we're not checking what's already been paid prior to cutting the check.
Yes, starts with the person who's overseeing the contract, one of our staff, before they send it, obviously, they have to, they have to cross-check on the actual amount that was paid previous, and they should have caught that at that time.
So obviously, 400, to me, it is a lot of money. Just, to me, that would have triggered so many places along the line, like, wow, that's a big fat check, we don't write those very often.
We write, actually, for construction projects, it was a pretty routine, so that wouldn't, it wasn't a flag at all for anybody. Obviously, when it, when it came through the system, we, it was a, thought it was a routine payment. Had it been caught at the origin, we would have obviously not gone any further.
Do we have a control in place for, based off of dollar amount of invoice?
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Like a minimum amount?
Well, I can only approve invoices for the bank up to 20,000, and then it has to be kicked up to my boss.
Oh, these?
And so you have a series of gates that you have to go through.
Contract payments require a minimum of, I think, four, maybe five signatures on our side.
And all five of those signatures miss this?
Well, again, it starts with the original one. If it looks like the invoice is accurate, no one would know after that first original step. That's, that's where you needed to have the cross-check on the original past payment.
I think you need to do some training with staff as to what it means to put their name on a piece of paper.
We've already done this.
Yeah, because what it sounds like is if, if it all goes on the first person, if it's, for lack of a better way of saying, is if it's the first person's fault, no matter what, then you might as well not have the other four signatures on there.
The reconciliation process, right, exactly.
But if number two, three, four, and five aren't doing some level of research, other than just, yeah, it looks good, then you might as well not have the other signatures, right?
I agree.
Okay.
So, just out of curiosity, and I know we're going to talk about this perhaps a little later, I think you mentioned we're going to get a little bit of a status update, but the process and control review that you're planning to have done, is that going to include the disbursements process?
Yes, it will.
So this will all get looked at as part of that?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll have a good chance to look at these controls and see where maybe there's training issues, maybe there's control definition problems, people are not defined to be doing the things they ought to be doing, or maybe they just need to be trained. All that will be part of that review, right?
Yes, and I will add, this is one of dozens of payments that we make each year on contracts. It, in my, well, I'm quite certain this is probably one of, I can't remember the last time we've had one of those types of payments, so this is the last 13 years. There was definitely a mistake, and we've gone back, we tried to research how that could have happened. In fact, you know, the check got cut, got sent all the way to the company, something we don't, obviously, this is an anomaly at best. But we do have those, those controls in place. This one obviously was missed.
If, no, Bob, I'm sorry. If the process doesn't prevent it, and you have an occurrence, well, you don't know that you haven't had an occurrence before unless we go do a complete audit.
No, I'm quite certain that we have not had other occurrences. Those, those contracts are to the penny paid out. I'm quite certain of that. I don't need to even explain that part. Those, those controls are in place. This one was missed by somebody, no doubt about it. I'm not sure how else to explain that. We are going to put better controls in place, we are training that person as we speak to confirm those numbers. He should have taken the previous invoice, compared it to the one he had in front of him. I believe that wasn't done in this particular case, as we normally do.
Councilmember Mayhew, to your point, that's part of why I'm looking forward to this. Like I said, the city's been growing very fast, and we've been tending to a lot of the critical, you know, city services, the police, and the fire, and the parks, and other things, citizens really see the value for out there, but we've not done a great deal of growing of the staff on, on the administrative side of the equation. And so it wouldn't surprise me if part of the, some of that was that we've been kind of straining those human resources internally a little bit, too, in terms of the amount of paperwork passing by, by their purview. So, you know, those are all the things that we want to evaluate and look at.
Right, I, I think, I'll give you a little preview of what you're going to discover. No control is a control if only one person does it. You're going to discover that two people have to do every single thing. Now, there may be a list of eight things that need to be done, and so those eight things being done twice means 16 things to be done. That may be spread across five people, that may be entirely appropriate, but each thing has to be done by two people in order for control to be adequately defined. So this is the kind of thing that I think you'll elicit. The other thing is that when someone's going through, it's great that you're retraining them, that's fantastic. What you'll discover is that people that are doing controls, it's, there's studies, they just need to have a list. It's, I think the example you gave, Mayor, previously was a pilot, and they may go fly a plane, in fact, they may take a flight, be on the ground for an hour, and then take the same plane back up, and they go through the whole checklist again. So there's a checklist that says exactly what you have to do before you sign off, and I think this is, somebody else made a comment about, along those lines as well, is, so this is just getting kind of formal, and this is one of the things that as an organization grows, you discover you need to get more formal about how you do things, and I think that you'll really benefit from this review.
Any other questions or concerns on the consent agenda, council? Okay. Is there anybody, a member of the public that would like to comment on any of the consent agenda items prior to action? All right, seeing no move in favor, moving forward, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. With that, we move on to the ordinances. Finance Administration Committee, Agenda Bill 17158, ordinance levying the general Committee Agenda Bill seventeen one five eight, ordinance levying the general taxes and levying excess property taxes for the city of Snoqualmie for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand and eighteen, on all property, both real and personal, in said city, which is subject to taxation. The general taxes are for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the departments of said city for the ensuing year, and the excess property tax levy is for the purpose of paying debt service on the city's unlimited tax general obligation bonds, two thousand and sixteen. All is required by law and providing for collection thereof. This is only for introduction tonight, however, if you could read it.
The city of Snoqualmie requires a regular levy in the amount of seven million nine hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars, which includes an increase in property tax revenue from the previous year and amounts resulting from the addition of new construction and improvements to property and any increase in the value of state-assessed property and amounts authorized by law as a result of any annexations that have occurred and refunds made in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of the city of Snoqualmie and its best interest, and in its best interest.
Okay. Again, this is only for introduction tonight.
Would you like to hear a little bit about it?
Yes, sir.
So, as I mentioned earlier, this is one of the more important duties the council has each year. One of the things we can't get out of in a two-year budget, we've got to certify property taxes each year. And because you had a levy lid lift in two thousand and sixteen, a few things have changed. For those of you that aren't quite familiar with this stuff, there are a few components of property taxes. One is the basic amount that we get each year, about seven and a half million bucks, I think, for eighteen. The second element of it is the Iman Initiative, one percent. Cities are allowed to increase regular property taxes by either one percent, or the lesser of, what lesser of one percent, or the implicit price deflator, another measure of inflation that tries to, to take consumer spending, consumer reaction to price increases, where the consumer price index is just a change in the price increases. So we go through a little exercise. When the implicit price deflator is published, we determine if it breaks the one percent threshold. If it doesn't, like you think, last year?
Last year it did.
Yeah, last year it did. So you had to pass a third document, which is a substantial need increase. You had to show the public that you believe the full one percent was substantially needed. So those are two components. The third component is new construction. Any new construction that comes on the books for the first time, new homes, new buildings, is, gets a, says the city gets the full levy rate from the current year. That's in addition to the one percent. And then there's an increase in the value of all of the gas, electric, telephone, public, privately-owned utilities in the city. The city gets the full levy rate on the difference between this year and last year. So those are in addition to the one percent. Third, we get any annexation, of course, that, that comes into the system for the, the first time. We haven't had one since two thousand and thirteen, when the mill site was annexed. And we also get refunds. This is a situation that arises when Mrs. Pruitt and I go to the assessor's office and apply for a discount. And if they say yes, the rest of you get assessed for it. So, this year, the refunds are twenty-six thousand dollars. So that, we get to have that back. It's reassessed to everybody in our taxing district. So one of the decision points today is to whether or not we, we put the one percent in place. And the administration's recommendation in the original two thousand and seventeen, eighteen budget was that we do it. So let me just go over the components a little bit. So, in the brown line in two thousand and seventeen is the amount of money that we got in, or will get this year. And you can see on the line, too, there is no levy limit, factor one percent. There's no new construction, there's no increase in utility value. And that's because voters approved the levy lid lift. And in the first year of the lift, those all go away. And what you did, as I understand it, was you specified a levy rate to the assessor of two dollars and seventy-eight cents, which ostensibly is supposed to be about a twenty-three cent increase to the basic levy. And that yielded eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, that money rolls into, this is so fascinating, I can hardly believe I'm doing this without stand-up. Two thousand and eighteen, we start out with seven million five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That has the levy lift rolled into it. So that figure now becomes the basis going forward, upon which the one percent is calculated. So one percent is seventy-five thousand dollars. Translated into English, it's about thirteen cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation, or twelve to thirteen bucks on a five hundred thousand dollar house, if you go ahead with it. The next line down is new construction. That's the value of the assessor has, has put on, actually, it's the tax amount. The valuation for assess is forty-one, fifty million bucks this year, right?
Fifty-one million dollars.
The third line is the increase in utility value, and it's in red because we don't get that figure. The Washington State Department of Revenue, rather than the assessor, calculates it. And it's never, still, after, it's never on time. You have to certify your property taxes to the assessor by the first Sunday in December, and you're not meeting until the eleventh. And so we do it at the second reading, November twenty-seventh, in this case, this year. Send it off to them, December fifth, the utility value comes in, and we get to change it. So that's been pretty much the deal. So as I mentioned, the levy lid lift is in the, the new basis. You add refunds in there, and you come up with seven million nine hundred and forty-six, forty-seven thousand bucks, and that's what's in your ordinance. The two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is the debt service on the voter-approved two thousand and two general obligation bonds, which you just refinanced, I understand. So that's an excess levy, voters approved. It's not part of our regular property taxes. It goes right to pay off the debt service on those bonds. That's added in, and you get a new total. Our assessed valuation increased thirteen percent, or three hundred and seventy-five million dollars. The tax increase is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks. We're not showing that on this slide. So, looking at the third line from the bottom, the levy rate specified in two thousand and seventeen for the lift was two dollars and seventy-eight cents. The rate for two thousand and eighteen, if the utility value comes in true, is two dollars and fifty-eight cents, a decrease. And that's because we have three hundred thousand dollars in increased taxes being diffused over an assessed value that has increased three hundred and seventy-five million. So, that's about it. Oh, the excess levy rate, the two hundred and forty-eight thousand translates to about eight cents.
Okay. The one percent tax increase is off which number? The seven point nine or the eight point two?
The seven five at the top of the page.
At the?
Right. And it's shown there, seventy-five thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So what we're talking in this agenda bill right here is increasing the, the real estate tax that we collect by seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
Property tax.
Property tax.
That's the, that's the next ordinance.
Excellent.
That's the increase ordinance.
Okay, so Rob, can you equate it to an individual? Because while here you're going, my taxes should go down based off of what you're saying. You have to remember that your, your individual assessment on your home may have gone up to offset any change.
Want to answer that?
Sure.
It's going to have to go quite a bit to, to offset it.
I'll give it a shot on this one. Basically, we've got some additional slides that we could show. So here's the property tax equation. Essentially, you multiply the assessed value by the levy rate divided by a thousand. If you were to translate your house value into a number, maybe your house is worth five hundred thousand dollars, and then you can multiply that by the levy right there, right there.
And house value is determined by the state land assessor?
The assessor's office.
King County.
Oh, King County, sorry.
So, for all the audience members out there, that's essentially how you would derive how much property tax you're paying.
Or, to be clear, that's, in that case, that's, you could go back. Back that again, yeah. To be clear, the math is, that's five hundred units of a thousand, so it's five hundred times two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Yes.
Okay. So it, and can you go back to the slide that shows twenty seventeen versus twenty eighteen? No, backward. There we go. Okay.
Your thumb's getting a workout today.
So, so, not a math guy, my wife does the budget at home.
Okay.
Just, that's my caveat, but there might be other people in the room that are like that. So, in twenty seventeen, it looks to me like the novice math guy that in twenty eighteen, even with a one percent increase, that I'm going to be paying less taxes. Is that true?
No.
Okay. I didn't think it was true, but tell me why it's not true.
Drew, can I just?
If your assessed valuation doesn't change in some proportion.
But it, it changed thirteen point one percent.
So let me just, let me see if I do the math right here. Two dollars and eighty-eight cents levy rate last year, correct?
Correct.
Two dollars and eighty-eight cents, correct?
Yes.
Total.
Total. So what I paid, what my bill that came to my house, two dollars and eighty-eight cents, right?
Correct.
The bill?
The city portion of the bill that came to your house.
If only it was two eighty-eight. The city portion was two eighty-eight, correct?
Correct.
Under this, one, with a one percent increase, if that is, is what we approve, the rate will be two dollars and sixty-six cents, correct?
Correct.
A decrease of seven point six percent, correct?
Yes.
If your assessed value does not change.
But the assessed value went up there.
Seven point six percent decrease in the rate per thousand, correct?
Yes.
But, if I'm the average in Snoqualmie, my property value went up thirteen point one percent, correct?
Yes.
Not necessarily. Isn't the change in AV, does it include or not include new construction?
That includes new construction and the potential increase in utility value as well.
So you have to back that out of the thirteen?
Won't take me long, three oh eight oh seven oh four.
Individual results may vary.
Three, I take out the one forty-two, six six three.
I think Mr. Larson is absolutely correct, that individual results do vary, so.
I understand that. I understand that. Unless you're going to give us a chart of every homeowner, we're going to have to deal with these averages you've given us, right?
No, but if you look at the top two lines, we collected six point seven million dollars last year through this levy, okay? The proposal is to increase that by seventy-five thousand dollars to get seven point six million dollars next year.
I understand that.
And there's a couple of new property coming in to add to that number.
We're getting nine hundred thousand dollars extra for charging seventy-five thousand, is that what you're saying?
New property being built that adds into the pool. I think it's important to go down to the next level. You've got the regular levy total, because you've got the levy lid lift, amount of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars in that. So it's seven point five seven million. About, on the right-hand column, regular levy total, that can carries over to the top for twenty eighteen. That's your base. That's what you calculate the new taxes off of.
All right, so can we get back to what I was trying to do? The, the hundred and forty-two thousand isn't going to make a big difference off that three million assessed value number, right?
So that is the new construction, it's fifty-one million that we're adding to the assessed value, not the hundred and forty-two. The hundred and forty-two?
How much are we adding to the assessed value?
Utility or new property tax off the construction value that's now coming on board.
How much are we taking off this? Are we adding to the assessed value for new construction?
We are.
How much?
Fifty million.
Fifty million.
Fifty million off of three billion.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Plus whatever the utility.
Fine proportional.
No?
No.
No, the, the change in utility value is not changing new construction.
Okay, so, so I can tell you that my valuation went up double digits this year. So, you're really at a wash, or you're still paying a higher tax bill, but it's based on a lower rate.
Yes.
And higher assessment.
And, and really, so I sat through a three-hour school board meeting last week, where they decided to vote on going after the max increase possible with virtually no story to tell. And so what I'm trying to avoid is a similar situation, is a different governmental entity. If we're going to talk about raising taxes by point zero zero one percent, I want to understand what the story is that we're telling. And, because there are ways to spin things, I'm not interested in spinning things. And so I want to understand, at the end of the day, I don't think anybody cares about a rate. I think they care about what am I going to pay, dollars. And that's what I'm trying to understand. How many dollars am I, average Joe Blow homeowner, we'll just use the five hundred thousand dollar homeowner, although I don't think you can find much for that here. And that's what I'm trying to understand. The bottom line is, a tax increase means I'm going to pay more.
So Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, to get to Councilmember Sunwell's, because I'm a little leery about apples to oranges comparisons here of home values versus millage rates, but if we take the five hundred thousand dollar home, and if my math was correct, it's about a sixty-five thousand dollar, a thirteen percent increase in value goes from five hundred to five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Does that sound right? And then, and then five hundred and sixty-five units of a thousand times two, two sixty-six, you know, garners fifteen oh three versus at five hundred units times two eighty-eight.
But that thirteen percent includes the increase due to new construction. It's not just a flat AV increase. There's another factor in there of new construction added in. That's why it seems elevated at thirteen percent. You have to break it up for what that?
Well, it's the same for a moment that your house went up by thirteen percent. That doesn't necessarily result in a thirteen percent increase in your property taxes. What I'm suggesting is the difference, at the end of the days, is about sixty-three dollars, to your point. It was, it's about four, four point three percent increase, four point four percent.
So if you take a five hundred thousand, your house, and the old levy rate, that's going to cost you less. So the question is, how much is assessed value going to change? This is also, this AV also includes, you know, all of the business property in town. Everything that is, is valued and assessed by the assessor. So I guess, you won't know about that until March, when you get your tax bill.
So, I, I don't think that that is an acceptable answer.
Which one?
That we don't know what the impact on taxes is going to be. It's not an acceptable answer.
At individuals or adults.
What's so complicated about it is, home, home values in different neighborhoods and different housing stock are going up and down all over on that assessed valuation. So my house, my house might increase in appreciation by thirteen percent. Shaun's might only go up by five percent.
But it's, I, I think it's pretty simple. Last year, I paid on a per thousand what?
Okay, so if you had a five-
In twenty eighteen, on a per thousand, I'll be paying what?
If you had a five hundred thousand dollar house last year, you're, you're, you paid four, five, six thousand, five thousand dollars for four, five thousand dollars probably on your house. But that's for the entire tax pie, for the city's twenty-two point, twenty-two and a half percent portion. For just that portion, on a five hundred thousand dollar house, last year, you paid one thousand four hundred and forty dollars at two dollars and eighty-eight cents per thousand, okay? The next year, when it go, when the millage rate goes up to, or goes down to two sixty-six, but your house increased by, say, thirteen percent, now it's worth five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Five hundred and sixty-five units times two sixty-six equals one thousand five hundred and three dollars. And that difference is sixty-three bucks.
Sixty-three bucks.
Sixty-three bucks.
Okay. That's, that's what.
And that, and, and actually, if, if we could somehow give that formula to each household, and they can go online and look at their tax assessment, they can immediately do a calculation on how their actual tax, because I constantly get, my house value went way up, what are you doing with all the extra taxes? Because I think the assumption is that that rate of two eighty-eight stays flat. The increase goes up thirteen percent, and we're getting two eighty-eight on every one of those additional thousand dollars of value.
I think we should step back, though, and remind ourselves, if we're talking just about the one percent, the seventy-five thousand dollars, that will have a significantly less impact on individual property owners. You can do simple math and say there's about forty-five hundred homes in this city, and that doesn't even include commercial, doesn't, that not include industrial. That, that number, if you just took the homes, is roughly sixteen dollars per year, just so we're clear about what we're, what we're doing here. That's why I said, bring it up a level. What, what, what the proposal is here is to increase the property tax collected by the city by seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right. Knowing that our operational costs are going up to the two and a two and a half to three percent minimum per year, healthcare and inflation. And so if you don't do it in that one percent increment every year, you're simply postponing that adjustment, and you're, you're moving forward the necessity to have to ask for that levy rate increase.
Well, and we do, so there are actually three options here. It's voted in, yes, voted down, no. And the third option is to bank the increase, and just postpone it till a later time.
And do it, and do it two or three percent.
Yeah, two or three percent later on, when?
When you feel you need it.
Well, that would be a, if council wants to consider that, we would, I would like to have staff run an analysis. There's a neighboring committee that's been banking their capacity, but they're also finding out that that capacity is not the hundred percent they thought they had.
You lose the compounding value.
Well, not only that, but you actually lose some of the, the actual value of it, because you don't get, you don't get to bank it all. It loses, loses value over time. But I would love to do that analysis if council's interested. Well, I, we should have all options on the table, and we don't. So I think you ought to do the analysis. I'd like to see a consensus of council on that issue.
Okay.
Yes, please. I think we need to do a levy, levy one oh one.
Might be an appropriate retreat topic, but.
Well.
I would also suggest that Joan actually built something out on our new website that can calculate last year's versus this year, putting in your assessed value. That's a pretty simple tool that we should have up on that page, along with talking about the fact that we only collect, it's under thirty percent of the gen, the, the actual property tax that you pay goes to the city of Snoqualmie. So that would be a good story to tell that while property taxes, thank you, Drew.
So our portion is the orange.
Yeah, a little bit lower than I was recalling, so twenty-three. So I think that's something to get back to this whole discussion on communication. We can give citizen tools off of that website that would allow them to calculate based on a twenty seventeen rate and a twenty eighteen rate, and then put in something that would, put in their new assessed valuation to show what these percentages actually work out to be.
I do have that formula. I presented it at many of the state of the city addresses or chamber.
Put it on the website, so that people can use it as an interactive tool. That's what I'm saying.
So, to, to something that Councilmember Mayhew and I have talked about offline a couple of times. When people have been, you know, we've heard the word transparency for the last, at least I have, for the last six months. It's not just about having cameras in council chambers. in council chambers, it's not just about not doing things on the sly, which I don't think we have been, it's about telling a story, and those one-pagers you were talking about, whether it's about the mill site, or about the Salish expansion, having that one-page or that just very highly consumable thing that, that can tell the story of what it is we're trying to do. To me, that is transparency, that, because transparency means kind of taking something from a language that not very many people understand, and putting into a language that a lot of people do understand, right? And that's how I think you get, not only do you get more citizen engagement, I think you get also a lot of more citizen understanding, and I think we help mitigate and even prevent some of the headwinds that we create by a lot of misinformation out there, simply because we're not doing a good job of putting the right information out there. And so misinformation reigns supreme. And so it's just a high-level comment, this is, you know, when it comes to money, there's nothing more dear and dear to people's hearts than money. And at the end of the day, I just wanna know how much I'm gonna have to pay. And I, I think I'm, there's a lot of people that feel that way. They don't care about the weeds. We have eleven people watching this council meeting right now, and we have another twenty in here, and some of them are city employees. So the level, the number of people who want that level of engagement, I think, is relatively small. I think what everybody wants is how much I'm gonna pay and what am I getting for it? And that's ultimately the city's job to describe.
Well, and I think most people, when you hear property tax that aren't educated on this slide, think the city is taking my, that it's a city paycheck that you're giving to the city, and they don't realize all the taxing authorities that come off of that.
Yeah, I think most people would be surprised to know that a little more than fourteen-hundred dollars of their tax bill is going to the city, and the rest is going to all these jurisdictions, the King County libraries, the ports, the King County.
And fifty-five percent to schools.
Yes, schools.
Fifty-four.
Councilmember Mayhew, you were, I think, kinda cut off.
Yeah, could we, so I, I, so I think this is really important, particularly this year, because for those that understand what's going on with the levy, and what's happened at the state level and school funding, there's going to be some surprises, I think, for a lot of people when they get next year's property tax bill, and it's not gonna have anything to do with us, at the city. But I do think that we need to be clear about what our city's portion of that is. And so if we just go back to that slide that had a bunch of numbers on it, that one, that, the thing that I'm concerned about here is if you take the green line, total taxes, you just compare seven-point-eight million to eight-point-one, eight-point-two million, and you use a calculator, you conclude that it's a four-point-four-percent increase, okay? And so the, then you look down to the bottom line, and you see a rate of two-eighty-eight going down to two-sixty-six, and you scratch your head, because that seems to say the rate's going down. Well, the discrepancy is because the assessed value went up. And so the thing I'm worried about here is we're focusing on an idea of raising one-percent, but I think we need to have some concept clear of what, what increase happens without the one-percent, because we're not at zero. There, there's an increase already. And so then, then the other thing I would say, just to complete out, and I, I think Councilmember Pruitt or Sunwell just said this, which is, what, what then are we doing with that money? And the answer is, well, we're paying for increased costs. We have raises that we have to give the city's employees. We have increased contractor costs for services contracts.
Healthcare.
But, exactly, we have a whole number of increased costs. So the thing is, I, I think someone would scratch their head and say, okay, well, how much are you, what percentage are you increasing, and how's that match up to your increasing costs, and does it make sense? And so I think if we could find a way to answer that question, it would be very helpful. I've just boiled it down to a relatively simple question. I understand there's a lot of moving pieces in here, and what I was trying to do was find a way to try and help people just cut to the quick on this. And, and cutting to the quick is gonna say, well, your rate on your property tax is probably going up, even if we don't do the one-percent, just for the city portion.
Yeah, that's not.
I think that's not true.
I'm sorry, get a microphone.
Well, then we, then we need to say whether that's true or not.
You have the numbers right in front of you. The assessed val, the assessed value's got two-hundred more taxpayers than it, than it did last year. They're all paying taxes as well. This is not the first time that this has happened here, and it's had a mollifying effect on individual property taxes. So if your, you know, if your assessed value goes up twenty-percent, yeah, you'll pay more. But on what we know today, you're gonna pay less if it's thirteen-percent or less. But, you know, I, I fully applaud and endorse the way of getting some more of this information out of the public, because, I mean, it is confusing.
Well, I think, but I think that does speak to Councilmember Mayhew's point, Rob, that we, we could provide some narrative to explain all those, you know, what are the, what are the ten sort of metrics that are affecting that, you know, whether it's property values going up, X many new residents providing new taxes, but they're also putting additional pressure and demands for services, which is why we had to, you know, add firefighters, add a police officer, and additional other staffing. So it's showing both, kinda illustrating both sides of that story in terms of increased costs and increased revenues and increased costs.
All I can tell you is two-eighty-eight and two-sixty-six is a difference of seven-point-six-percent. That's math.
Right, but we don't control the rate.
Not thirteen-percent.
I mean, that, that's the, when you wanna talk about cutting to the quick, from a legal standpoint, the point to emphasize is the city levies a dollar amount of property tax. The, or, and you look at the ordinance and says the regular lev, property tax levy is X, and that amount goes up by one-percent legally, that's the cap. We don't levy a rate, we don't set the rate, it's a, it's a function of the math that the assessor applies, and the council has nothing to do with the rate. So I think Rob and Drew provide that information for, for every, for, as an additional data point, but in some ways, it serves to confuse rather than clarify, because we don't have control over it.
Drew, stay on that chart. Okay, again, it's our levy basis in twenty-seventeen, the basis.
It's the brown one.
It's the brown one, and it, it's when you get up to, but our basis was six million, six-point-seven million dollars was the X amount we did in twenty-sixteen. We're going to increase that by one-percent. Actually, I get the levy basis in twenty-eighteen because of new construction, whatever, actually comes seven-point-six. Then we're gonna do one-percent on top of that. X times point-zero-one is seventy-five-thousand dollars. You are increasing the property tax to the city by seventy-five-thousand dollars.
Right.
That's the purpose of this agenda bill.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's why, and this, this closer gets caught up in this, that's why levy rates, to me, don't matter. We just spend so much time talking about levy, who cares? The bottom line is, is that we're, we're at, we're potentially asking to raise an additional seventy-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-one dollars across the entire city as an increase in what they will be taxed. Divide that by however many homes or whatever you wanna do, and it comes up with some.
So you divide it by the rate, you back into this levy rate to show proportionally what you would pay as a homeowner based on a thousand dollars of assessed valuation. So it does become important in terms of telling the story that while we are increasing at one-percent, it is spread over, A, new property owners in the city, meaning new homes, and.
Businesses.
New businesses, and that it's based off of total assessed valuation, and that's what we can't control in this, is the actual assessed valuation. You have to wait for the King County assessor to determine that number. And so it's, the, the story is not, you're correct, the story is not about the levy rate, the story is about the fact that it's seven-point-nine million divided amongst a greater pool, and here's how you can calculate it based on your levy rate for your individual.
Well, and the flip, and the flip side of this story is, is the expense side. If I, if I made no changes in staffing and others, just, just the cost of healthcare and cost of living increases and, you know, contracts and so forth, and inflationary issues on supplies and materials are, like I said, going up in excess of two-and-a-half to three-percent. So, yeah, we'd increase this by one-percent to get seventy-five-thousand dollars more in revenue, but we know for a fact that we're incurring about another two-hundred, two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars annually in increased costs. And if I don't have something to offset that, that's just, that's a structural flaw that's gonna eventually erode your budget.
We're also increasing our reserves by one-point-three million dollars in twenty-seventeen and one-point-seven million dollars in twenty-eighteen.
But the reserves doesn't come out of thin air.
This, that, do you need, do we need it? Before we go through all this, do we need it? And I, I, we had no, no.
As you know, Councilmember, as Councilmember Holloway, you know most of those reserves have been built up from one-time revenues that we've not wanted to use in operational budgets, on ongoing operational budgets. So we've had the benefit, and we're coming to that point where at the full build-out of Snoqualmie Ridge, we will no longer be enjoying those levels of one-time revenues coming in. So we have felt that we needed to take advantage of that time to prepare for the full build-out, when those one-time revenues disappear, and have us in a very solid fiscal position to be able to weather some storms. As we're, as we're watching the fiscal ship in terms of, you know, being, being attentive to the fact that costs are going, going up in excess of two-hundred-thousand dollars a year, this seventy-five-thousand dollars, or the one-percent increase on the other end of it helps kinda keep that in check for as long as possible, but, you know, occasionally, like every five, eight, six, eight years, we're gonna have to do levy lidlifts. But with the economic development that we've been doing with some of those projects, it's gonna push that off even further, as we've seen. That's been the goal with diversifying revenues for the city, so we can take the pressure off those property taxes.
Can I try this one more time, see if I understand it? Last year, all of us that live in the city collectively paid seven-point-five, seven-oh?
Every.
Under seven-point-six million?
Every business, every piece of property.
Was it do business or live in the city?
Yeah.
Yep. Actually, all of us own property in the city.
Correct.
All parcels that are taxable.
Yeah? And what's gonna happen is for that group that paid seven-five-seven-oh, we're saying that this year, we will ask that group to pay seven-six-four-five, a mere seventy-five-thousand, not mere, a seventy-five-thousand dollars more.
Right, exactly.
And that is an increase of one-percent, and that the remaining amounts we get will come from people that were not here last year, that are new property, there's new property that's come to the city or been developed, new people paying.
Right, exactly.
Okay, so for the one-percent that we're going to be asked to pay, those of us that were here last year, that is funding city costs that have gone up, in fact, much more than one-percent.
Three times that amount.
Three times that amount.
About inflation, the general increase in inflation.
So the way that, so for those citizens, we are getting, we, we are getting the remainder paid for by these new property owners, and perhaps other funding sources, other taxes and so on, but from a property tax perspective, which is half of our budget, we're paying one-percent, and we're getting a lot more than one-percent increased cost covered by that.
That's a great way of putting it, and that's the way we, we've kinda stopped gapping that, that structural gap in the budget, is that new construction and new revenues has sort of filled in that, that two-percent gap.
And when that.
But, but the problem in that, as you were challenging, when you saw the graph last time on the projections going five or six years out, we weren't showing much growth in that expense line, because, you know, in terms of staffing, but that's just flat-out unrealistic. At some point, that new growth, that new development is putting additional pressures on more services and needs.
So the number we see on this chart of one-hundred-and-forty-two-thousand-six-six-three on the new construction line, that's a number that's not sustainable. That's gonna eventually turn into a number closer to zero.
Yeah, because in an ideal situation, if we were able to do increases in excess, before the Iman Initiative, when cities could increase it, the rate of inflation to and a half, three, four percent, or more, even up to six percent, you could keep up with that, and if you get those additional revenues, that can be allocated purely toward your, your needs for additional staffing resources or city resources to attend to the needs of a growing community.
All right, and to Councilmember Holloway's point on reserves that are going up a bit, that's not coming from this one-percent, that's coming from these one-time sources?
Right.
So we're getting between the yellow and the brown line, as, as you articulated well, that, that three-hundred-and-one-thousand dollars is basically new people, new business, one-time stuff, right? And that number's gonna get increasingly closer to zero with full build-out.
I'm sorry, Rob, you gotta use the mic, microphone, so we can pick you.
We'll continue always to get that, those numbers in the valuation, fifty million in new construction, that goes into the assessment. What he's saying is, is that in future years, if we don't have robust construction like we have, you're not gonna see that number, you might see that number below a hundred-thousand dollars. There's always some construction going on.
Which we've always operated from, that, that this day will come, which is coming near, which we can't rely on that, we can't plan for that. We have to plan for the fact that it wouldn't be there, which gives us, which, which is precisely what gave us control to be able to say no to, like, the twelve-hundred-home project, because we weren't in a desperate situation, have to chase after more growth revenue to keep those numbers flowing in between the yellow and brown line.
So you'll always see a little bit in, take away build-out of SR two, and take away Salish and Mill Site, you're always gonna see a little bit of new construction. We've got the property down by the honey farm that encompass will rehab or rebuild, I'm not sure what their plan is. So you'll see some new construction, but you won't see it at the levels where we've been seeing.
For over a decade.
For a decade.
And you'll see the utility value continue.
Right, and so then just from a, a sustainability perspective, trying to evaluate this one-percent increase, when we've got costs going up at three times that, and we're in essence covering the difference with things that are not necessarily, they're not sustainable, they're one-time items, or items that may recur but at a much lower level, in order to have a sustainable revenue source or to cover our costs, we need to keep going at least the one-percent, because our costs are going up much more than one-percent.
Couldn't have said it better, Jim, yeah.
But we're only talking about fifty-one percent of our revenue source.
Correct.
Right, so we're talking about the property tax component of our revenue source. So we're only getting, but, so the three-percent or whatever you're using to talk about how much costs are going up, we're getting a third of that from property tax. I assume we're not having to make up the two-percent. We're, we're getting part of that remaining two-percent out of the other forty-nine percent of our budget.
Not necessarily, I mean, because that, that, you know, the rest of the budget is sort of in that same static position. Yeah, we're only getting a one-percent increase in about half the budget. You're right, in some ways, that gap is even bigger when you can count for the whole pie on the general fund. But I wanted, and I'm sorry if I.
The reason I, I bring that up, Mayor, is because you've talked about this slide where at some point in time, well, Nicholas, the last time he was up here, talked about how, how can we push out the time where those lines converge, right? And we talked about how diversity of revenue is critical to making that happen. So the lower, this gets below fifty-percent, the less the fact that we can only collect one-percent every year is an issue, because now the bulk of our, the majority of our budget is not dependent upon this component of revenue.
Well, I think the one-percent is still critical, but I, I think you were kinda going where I was going, is that all those numbers, that three-hundred-thousand dollars you're talking about, that starts to quickly then wane and disappear as we hit the full build-out. And to Jim's point, that's not a sustainable piece, and it's pieces we've been trying to wean ourselves off of as we hit full build-out. We've been working strategically for over a decade to make sure things like the Safeway, the Bartels, the hotel, the Salish expansion, or the Mill Site are the pieces that are, as one revenue source starts to disappear, these other ones come into play.
One, one growth piece of revenue starts to disappear.
And the, and the, the better part about it, the piece that comes in to replace it is an ongoing sustainable piece.
Right.
That is not limited to the one-percent.
Right, exactly.
This is the only part that is limited in terms of what you can do.
So when half your revenue is limited to one-percent increase every year, that's a problem.
That is a big problem.
Absolutely.
That's why tax diversification is so important.
And that's why I said we were building up the reserves to anticipate that, that sequence between one sort of phasing out and the others coming in, you know, we never plan on things working out perfectly, whereas assuming worst-case scenario, so you, you want that contingency worst-case scenario to sort of weather through that, maybe a hiccup and a more of a gap there than we thought.
Our four largest revenue sources, obviously, are property tax, and closely engaged with that is utility tax, that's coming from the homeowners and businesses that obviously consume utilities, city utilities.
That's not utility fee, it's a tax, a utility tax on things like your cell phone bill, your Comcast bill, your.
Oh, no, just, but a larger portion of, yeah, comes from our actual water sewer utilities as well, but there's other taxes, but it's associated.
All those utilities, including your Comcast.
But the utility tax is the largest of those for our own utility, which is the nine-point-nine percent. And then the other two are related to.
Sorry, just to be clear, that's the tax on the water and sewer, not the water and sewer themselves, that goes into.
So you pay your utility bill, you're paying, yeah, you pay, you say sixty dollars for your water, and then there's a utility tax on top of that, that tax goes to the general fund, the fee goes to the enterprise.
Then the other two are business and operations and retail sales. Then the other two are business and operations and retail sales, which are closely tied to economic development.
But if you add up those other sources that aren't, so fifty percent is, is, is property tax. If you add up all the rest, so this is just math.
Just rough.
If we have a three percent increase in costs and half of our revenue is at one percent, mathematically, the other half has to be at.
Larger.
Five percent.
Or larger, yeah.
And our sales tax isn't going up five percent, is it?
And the other piece you have to keep in mind, I think it's been said a couple of times, but once we are done with what I'll call all the new construction, the property tax is going to go down as a percentage of the total because there's, there's not, there's not going to be any more new property taxes coming from that. So that's what other cities have experienced over the years. They had, obviously it's a static amount. And the other, and then when you hit a recession or something else, then, then your real revenues start coming down and they plummet in some cases. That's why it's so important that, that at least to consider, and we are strongly recommending from administration side, to take the one percent that's given. Because, and Mayor mentioned it earlier, but we've had two levy lid lifts in the past five years, I believe.
Well, frankly, since two thousand and one, in the last sixteen years, we've only done two.
But recently, we've had.
Since the Iman Initiative was passed in two thousand and one.
We had to take both of those and voters did approve those. But without those, we would have a much larger gap. And we're, and as Mayor explained, I think we're predicting another levy lid lift consideration in the next three to four years without some other substantial new commercial, retail or industrial development.
That, that one percent cap is throwing cities across the state of Washington in a constant state of crisis. And those communities that have been deferring or banking or not taking advantage of the one percent do nothing but exasperate. They're kicking that problem down the road and it comes back to bite them big time.
Can you help me understand what it means to bank? You mentioned a city nearby that you purposely did not name that is, has been banking them. What is that, what is banking?
Sure, you take, you take the seventy-five thousand dollars and you set it aside. You don't, you don't take the increase this year. So you can look at it taking it perhaps next year or the year after. One city's compounded that over the last, I can't remember the last time they actually, well, it's probably never taken an increase since the Iman Initiative. So they're going on thirteen or fourteen years of not taking it. At some point, that amount dwindles. And I think they also got caught up where they, they actually lost value on it. I'm not sure exactly how that happened, but they did not get the full value of that, of that full bank.
But you, you can't save it. You can't say, I'm not going to take one percent now because I'm going to take two percent next year. You can't do that.
No, you can't, yeah.
You can.
That's exactly, yeah, the story limits us one percent, but if you bank it, then you could do more than one percent if you bank some of that.
With those limitations.
Are taking not one percent to take two percent. My understanding is you can take your one percent and the dollar value of what you bank. So if we were to bank seventy-five thousand and decide five years from now that we're going to use it, you only get seventy-five thousand. So you've now lost the net present value and it's now valued.
You've, you've lost five years of compound interest at one percent.
You've gotten behind the curve.
Well, not only, yeah, yes.
The statute says that if you don't take it, you, when you do exercise that option and you take the bank capacity, you can set the rate, the dollar amount as if you had been taking it each year. So you would get the one percent compound, but you lose, as Kathy said, the net present value of the money is worth less five years from now than it is today. And so the purchasing power of that seventy-five is, is less.
So then just to Councilmember Sunwell's point, if we figure out how we're covering the three percent this year or two thousand and eighteen, if we take this one percent increase here, that'll be some of it. Some of it will come from the other revenue sources, but it won't be the five percent necessary. And so the remainder will come from the new construction and, and the other items that we see up on the screen here. And that's how we will actually cover the increased costs. Is that right?
Yes, that's not sustainable is the problem.
And that's the risk, yeah.
That's the rub, is that new construction dollar amount is not sustainable. So you have to figure out how to get either your BNO up or basically your retail tax up. So that's why economic development and what we're doing with the Millsite and the Salish is so important. And then eventually the annexation of Snoqualmie Hills will be just as important in my viewpoint so that you are attacking this problem. I don't think you want more housing on that property to drive the problem up. You want to offset with revenues that will offset this problem. So it's really important.
Right. Am I right in thinking though, when we get particularly something like Snoqualmie Hills, west, east, either one, we may have increased costs though. So now, yes, you may have revenues going up, but now you're going to have, you're not looking at a three percent increase in costs, you're looking at something different.
Right.
Is that probably true as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, so to Jim's point, so one percent is, we would accomplish the one percent of the three percent or a third of the three percent.
Amazingly, I follow that.
By this levy, right, that is amazing actually, especially since it came out of my mouth. So to Jim's point, that means that actually leaves five percent, we've got to go recoup from-ish. He has a really like old calculator, so I'm trusting him on his math. So my question though is, is aren't, how close, close, how close to that are we getting? Because it's not that we're, he, I don't think he was saying that we're not raising tax rates five percent. That's not the point. The point is, for lack of a better term, a capacity, right? So let's just use a number I've heard you say, Mayor, many times, that the Safeway complex and the hotel and that development, let's just use the number seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional sales tax revenue, right? So let's say in two thousand and nineteen, because not all that will be available in two thousand and eighteen, but in two thousand and nineteen, that is three-quarters of a million dollars of sales tax revenue that would go toward that at two percent that we're still missing, right?
Let me clarify, part of it's sales tax. There's other parts of BNO, there's lodging tax, that's a separate fund, but there's property tax and there's then utility tax. All, that development will pay all four of those, the general fund.
But what percent, so what is the raw number that we rely upon for retail sales tax in our budget?
Total?
For this, million six?
But.
Million six, so about eleven percent of our general fund revenue.
So a million six right now?
Yes.
How much, just sales tax roughly do we know would that com- that commercial complex add?
Remember the number was?
I don't remember what the number was, but we can certainly get you that.
At Salish?
No, 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 Safeway Hotel.
Well, Safeway.
One thing to keep in mind though, part of that eleven percent is being generated off of your new construction. So some of that is, is that.
That's sustainable, eleven percent.
Okay, I'm sorry. You have to, I'll just make a point of it though, is above the eleven percent, you also have the sales tax on construction items that is part of the quote-unquote one-time.
Why don't we show you how it's covered in two thousand and eighteen?
Sounds like you want more slides to be shown.
Well, yeah, if you do. And we're, we're submitting, the mayor's submitting a balanced budget to you. No deficits, no use of reserves and no use, our fund balance actually goes up a little bit. So there's money there to cover at least this year. And I think you're for, they're still using the Muni forecast that I.
I know.
Something that they kept.
Brilliant.
That I had something to do with. We can, we have shown you that in, in the retreats, forecast and a number of different assumptions and.
Well, I'm clear on this, so we can move on. I don't know what else you have.
Sorry, Mr. Orton, the one point six million mentioned, is that for eighteen or seventeen or are you, do you know?
It's for seventeen, I think.
Okay.
I'm going, I'm sorry, my, I've only been here, I've only been up since noon.
But, but even in seventeen, that number would include some.
He's choking, folks.
That, that number would, even for seventeen, would include some sales tax from that development that you were, that we were just talking about, right?
We can find that out. We have, we can't identify the taxpayer, but we can, how long, it's not all that old, is it?
It's brand new, it's a couple of months old.
When did the Safeway open?
Couple of months ago, yeah.
Oh, so we're not going to have a lot, but we can certainly.
No, we'll have some. So the point is we don't have a whole another, so even if seven fifty is the number.
But two thousand and nineteen will be the first year that we would have the full.
We can do the calculation on that.
Hotel will be open for the whole two thousand and nineteen.
But that's the presentation you saw about two, not the special county council meetings, but the last one that showed the really high level for all the numbers together and see where those expense revenues are going over the next several years. And that was that high-level picture. But then you can start digging down into the details, like you said. What, knowing that the expense line, as Councilmember Mayhew pointed out, not very realistic to have that sort of static line because the news looks really good, you know, if all this stuff falls into place, but it quickly turns a little more, we got to keep our belt tight when you see that the expenses are going to obviously increase or some staffing is going to have to increase along with that in cost.
We actually did that analysis when the, when the project was first proposed, was before I got out of here.
Yeah.
But it was, you know, I'm sure the configuration has changed.
I think that's one of the things that's been a little crazy and unusual about our city compared to many others just because of this, knowing we were approaching this fiscal cliff even ten years ago, we were always doing that long-range fiscal projection to say, we're, you know, where are we going? We knew the sooner we started on that road, the less painful it would be. The more we waited, it would collapse, you know, our need to make those adjustments for that transition after, after full build-out much more difficult. So it's a good thing we started over a decade ago.
So and one of the things that I think you all might want to look at is also the fact that we just said all one-time revenues should be diverted. Municipalities that are of a certain maturity in terms of their development, you're always going to have a layer of one-time revenues. People are always going to be remodeling their homes or you're going to have resale REIT-type monies. And one of the questions that we talked about a couple of years ago and we weren't ready to kind of, kind of change our philosophy on it was looking at that to see if that's something that we do want in the general fund to help offset the one percent a little bit. And at that time, for various reasons, we elected not to take that analysis up. But that might be also something you might want to consider now that we're seeing a little bit of a stabilization. And, you know, when we were talking about it, we were going gangbusters on development in terms of new homes coming on and it was just felt that it was going to be a little too hard to get to kind of what that level would look like. So that's something to consider also.
What's our timeline? We have one more council meeting to discuss this, then at the end of that council meeting, we would have to approve or reject this because we have to submit it in time, right?
Yes.
Yeah, it's ready for action on the twenty-seventh.
But again, I think next year, you got to look at these policies and this is part of the policy about one-time revenues.
Yeah, sort of a, is there a, can we get a beat on.
Can you do a normalized?
A normalized one-time revenue?
Yeah. Which I'm not sure yet, but, I mean, you've got like the school district in there building the high school right now. You've got the last few homes coming off, but there is quite a bit of, of still development, what I would consider development, construction that.
Well, you'll have a spurt with Salish too, right? You'll have a kind of a bump with Salish.
So I, the waters are pretty muddy in terms of trying to get to what that number looks like, but.
All right. So one last item on this, I would like to apologize and acknowledge that there's an error in the ordinance. In fact, that paragraph is, sorry, let me go back. I'd mentioned this number in the ordinance right here. It should really refer to this number as you see here and we will make that correction for the next council meeting. Thank you.
You've heard of the green one, it should have been the orange one.
Yes.
Oh, in the actual resolution?
Yes.
In the ordinance, yeah.
Yes, I'm like, everything I'm reading is fine.
Should be seven point nine, nine, eight point one. We'll get it, we'll get it corrected.
All right. Any other questions on this for now, for, or before action tonight? All right. All right, thank you, Drew. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to possible action at the next city council meeting? Seeing no one move forward, move on to Agenda Bill seventeen, one, five, nine. Ordinance certifying an increase in the general taxes for the city of Snoqualmie for the fiscal year commencing January first, two thousand and eighteen on all property, both real and personal in said city, which is subject to taxation. The general taxes are for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the departments of said city for the ensuing year. And again, this is only for introductions tonight.
The city of Snoqualmie requires a regular levy in the amount of seven million, nine hundred and forty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-six, which includes an increase in property tax revenue from the previous year and amounts resulting from the addition of new construction improvements to property and any increase in the value of state-assessed property and amounts authorized by law as a result of any annexations that have occurred and refunds made in order to discharge the expected expenses and obligations of the city of Snoqualmie and in its best interest.
Okay.
And yes, that was the same summary statement as last time. Wow, you retire and you forget the drill.
Yeah. No one wants to miss a word you're saying, Rob.
Streaming used to be something else when I was a kid.
Afraid to ask.
This ordinance is a protocol required by the assessor that simply specifies what the increase is. It's got no effect on us, but they got to have it.
It is a requirement.
It's actually required by the statute because the legislature thought it would help make things clearer. I'm not sure that it does, but yeah, it specifies the one percent in a separate ordinance.
All right. I don't know that there's any more further discussion. We kind of beat this, this one to death. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to possible future action? All right, seeing no one move forward, we will move on to Agenda Bill seventeen, one, six, zero. Ordinance, amendment, ordinance eleven eighty-six adopting the two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen budget. And again, this is just for introduction tonight, so please don't read the.
Ordinance eleven eighty-six adopted the two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen budgets on December twelfth, two thousand and sixteen. RCW's thirty-five point three, four point one, three oh and thirty-five A point three, four point two, three oh require the city of Snoqualmie to complete a mid-biennium budget review before the end of the year. This agenda bill acknowledges the fulfillment of the review obligation through the accompanying ordinance. The ordinance amends the two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and eighteen budgets to incorporate revenues and expenditures not reasonably foreseen at budget adoption and that will prospectively impact the city of Snoqualmie fiscally in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. As I say, this is not ready for action until the first meeting of December. However, is there any discussion or questions at this time, counsel? All right. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this item prior to possible future action? Seeing no one move forward, we'll move on to reports. Mark, just to make sure I don't forget, I'm going to, under Mayor's report, just quickly note that, counsel, for some time, I know some of you may have heard that Quadrant had, has been, had an interest in conveying a substantial amount of property along the Deep Creek Trail that goes down by the Preston Trail, you know, off of the back, the back, basically the whole backside of the ridge that kind of drops down to the Preston Trail area. And there's a number of properties down there which include some of the high-fold bypass lines that go down to the river. So it would be some infrastructure we'd be absorbing too. Mark will give you a briefing on that. If you're not comfortable kind of giving a go-ahead on this tonight, then, then we'll kick it back for further in-depth discussion. But Quadrant was pressing for us to have some direction tonight because the Mountain Sound Greenway Dinner comes up on the November twenty-ninth at the end of the month and they want to have this sort of a nice big announcement at the Greenway Dinner of this kind of land conservation or, or conveyance or preservation thing. I mean, because it would essentially be conveyed to us with the understanding that we would, we would put it into an open space, permanent open space kind of designation to protect it into perpetuity. So with that, Mark, why don't you go ahead and queue it up?
But is it in, I'm a little confused, is it in or outside of city limits?
Mark will get to that.
Both.
Both. And the update tonight is preparation for the Community Development Committee meeting on Monday, the twentieth, and City Council on the twenty-seventh, if we get that far. It's essentially four Quadrant-owned parcels labeled Quadrant one, Quadrant two, Quadrant three, Quadrant four. Three of these are outside the city, one, three and four. The city limit is this candy cane colored line. So Q two is entirely within the city. It's also important to note that the city of Snoqualmie owns property outside the city here and here and here. This section right here is not part of Q three, but owned by the city of Snoqualmie outside the city limit. King County Trails owns this section here and here.
And can you show the approximate locations of some of the high-fold bypass lines?
It's approximately in this location here.
And heads down, straight down toward the river, yeah.
Ben Swanson did a site visit with Phil Bennett in January to get a basic understanding of what's going on here, both for urban forestry and are we inheriting any infrastructure or maintenance costs as part of this decision? No land is free. We'll start with urban forestry. Phil Bennett, the city's arborist, highly recommends that we accept this conveyance because he adds him to his urban forestry program, which he presented as an update, I believe, four weeks ago. So it improves those great numbers that he showed there. He also classifies this and this as, and Q two, as the highest quality comparable to the highest quality already inside the city. So it's a net bonus for urban forestry and that entire program. As far as infrastructure goes, we're preparing a second exhibit for later this week for CD Committee on Monday night. for CD Committee on Monday night that identifies what infrastructure is where in relation to these four lots, so that it can be then asked, are we inheriting any sort of infrastructure maintenance? High-flow bypass is the one we know about. Ben Swanson identified two other areas, short areas, dealing with previous infrastructure, stormwater. So I think there's three stormwater improvements that we will identify.
Let's clarify the north high-flow bypass. That is an infrastructure improvement that was done, obviously, to benefit the ridge development. We, it's our drainage system, our storm drain, so we do own it. It's our responsibility.
There's two high-flow bypass lines. One is off of the back of the ridge where Marcus pointed to here. The other one goes down the parkway and kind of comes in just above the 202 Bridge into the Upper River. And the way they're designed, it was again to address flooding concerns for historic Snoqualmie. When you have a massive like Pineapple Express, all the three things, you've got snow melt, ground's been saturated, and then the Pineapple Express blows in and we have the three elements for a flood event. A crest is often predicted where the water hits that forest floor and it takes several hours to make it through the creeks and tributaries down to the main river stem. And often, water that would come off of this land here before it was developed would hit the river, you know, at the same time, a lot of the water from the mountains or the three forks would hit the river. And you'd have that, you'd have it all hitting at the same time. The idea here is that everything is collected in retention ponds. And if those retention ponds are overwhelmed, it goes into the high-flow bypass lines and hundreds of thousands of gallons of water shoots down those pipes and it's in the river and gone by the time all the crest hits from the mountains. So it breaks the sequence and it can actually improve or mitigate that impact on flooding. And so that's what the high-flow bypass lines are for. But as Bob said, there are infrastructure, as much as we'd like to keep in Quadrant's hands, as much as possible. It doesn't make sense that, you know, we reach full build out, the developer's gone. Why are they hanging around sort of having property and having any kind of responsibility for our infrastructure, so?
Is this, this is all outside the UGA, right?
Anything that's outside that candy cane line is outside the UGA. There's no undeveloped urban growth area in that whole portion of the city.
Q2 is inside the UGA and inside the city.
That's what I was after. Q2, the, whatever yellowish color is inside the city and inside UGA.
And therefore, yeah. Where is the falls on this and where is like the Preston Trail?
This King County Trail property through here is the Preston Trail.
That's the trail, okay.
And then the, at some point, the...
Falls is off to the...
Falls is definitely to the east. That failed rail, what do they call that, number bridge? Trestle is off to the east.
Okay.
But the alignment, you could see somewhat of the existing trail line right here.
So this would be meant to be open spaces, did I hear that right?
Yes.
All four?
About 100 acres added to the urban forest inventory. Q2 is already in the figures that he showed. The question to Phil recently was, even though these three are outside the city, would that benefit urban forests? His answer was yes, because of ownership, and he would claim it. So in grants and in that program, it doesn't have to be in the city limit.
And why is that important for the city? Help me understand why having more forest is a good thing for us as a city?
The, for whatever reason, the canopy cover went up 3% this year to 49%. And the more canopy cover in relation to development, especially new development, means a healthier environment, whether it's cooling or the river issue, water temperature. It's just a healthy, more beautiful environment.
I think you're saying whether it's in or out of the city.
So we just look better, is that what it is, or do we get something? I mean, how do I say?
Is there a monetary impact, say, for granting or for any other green program that we would participate in, that having a bigger urban forestry?
The short answer is yes. I'll let Phil answer any specific benefits to the urban forestry program because I'm versed on it well enough. But what I do know is by adding these three to that existing program, it gets better. It doesn't have to be inside the city limits. We can claim it because we own it. If we don't do this and they convey it to King County, they will claim it in their forestry.
So the backup plan would be to convey it to King County?
That is their backup plan.
Is there any consideration on Q2 to the tribe?
Not that I've heard of.
Q2?
There is very limited...
A little, I mean, it's close to the falls. It's the parcel closest to the falls.
But you're talking about very limited...
Maybe I can't read the numbers. What's the red one?
Q1, outside the city.
Any consideration, Q1, to the tribe?
Not that I have ever heard. There's very limited developability of the site. The highest and best use is that urban forestry tree canopy. You're talking about things like trails, trail connectivity. You're not talking about houses and commercial.
And you're most likely talking about, especially where it's directly adjacent to the trail as it sits now, perhaps putting in some benches, maybe some place for bikes to pull over, you know, something like that. Maybe an exercise area, but very, very limited of actual development.
For the three parcels that are outside of the city, what is the carrying cost to the city in terms of owning that land?
The importance of Phil's comment that these are high-quality represents that they are minimal maintenance as far as the vegetation. There is risk of landsides and repair of those, especially along King County Trail, but that stays the obligation of King County.
I'm thinking property tax. I mean, what's the...
If it is taxed, it's taxed at open space. It's open space. So it's, you don't pay property taxes if it were zoned residential. Can't be residential.
Quadrant's paying property taxes now, that goes off the books, no one's getting...
Because it's open space?
No, because you're gonna...
They're probably part of the cut program, which means it's little to no...
Well, they're going to give it over to a governmental entity. Either us or King County. At that stage, it's off the books, yes. One way or the other, these come off the books.
Even though it's outside of our city limits?
That's a question of whose books. Our books or the county's books? But it really doesn't matter. Once it goes to either the county or us, it comes off the books as far as real estate tax.
Comes off the tax rules.
Does it even if we own it outside of our city? I'm asking, it's a subject question.
Yes, yes, yes.
Maybe we can do a pill.
What's the advantage of the city having it versus King County?
Control over the say of trail improvements, specifically if a proposal were brought forward, having it under total city control and not just partial. You're dealing with one entity and one answer, City Council.
The other way around, for, is that Q4 is a yellow?
Yes.
Why would I take that when in essence it surrounds a county trail? Why not let the county take that and they can maintain the trail and the surrounding property?
That's a good question for you to answer.
But they main, who maintains the trail right now?
But we've got our infrastructure through there.
King County Trail.
King County maintains, and they're going to maintain that trail regardless.
It's a regional trail, yes.
Because it's a carve-out.
I think what you have to balance it with is Q4 has some of our infrastructure going through it.
Well, we have our trails going through a couple of these too, do we not?
And/or possible future trails, yes.
Q3 has trails going through it for sure.
Yeah, Q4 does not. Re-access the Preston Trail from there. The other piece that I would suggest it's more of a stewardship issue, who will be a better steward of that property, the land, yeah.
Well, Bob, we do have a trail...
In that regard, getting a King County staff member out there is not easy.
We do have a trail mark that goes around Jim's neighborhood down there at the bottom of Fairway, Fairway Place. That Deep Creek Trail, well, not there. It goes along the, no, it, it, yeah, it drops in by the park there.
It comes by Azalea out of Tanner Jeans.
No, Douglas, right there, I should grab a pointer.
Walk up.
Thank you. So it drops in here off of the Tanner Jeans Park or Azalea Park.
Yep.
Goes down through this area and by the creek, and I suspect it hits on some of these parcels.
It joins the trail in two spots.
And so it's hitting some of Q4 and it's hitting some of Q3 as it winds up and comes in right here by the power lines.
Shape looks like, kind of like Minnesota mayor and splits it right in two.
This one here?
It'll go higher and split right through there.
Yeah. I mean, so not only the high-flow bypass line, but our trail is cutting through. Of course, did you want the pointer, Bob?
He needs a map if that looks like Minnesota.
Issue everyone a pointer at the next meeting.
I would have gone with Idaho.
I'm just curious, is there any fire protection issues that we take on there that?
Bring it up now.
That's how you get your air tanker, huh? You've been wanting an air tanker.
I didn't think of that one yet.
You warned me, have four little propellers on it, but go ahead.
No, one of the things that we talked about from the hazard mitigation side of things previously is actually the Firewise program for a wildland threat. And that's, you get over into that area there and you have that threat coming, something coming up the hill, and that would allow us to potentially manage some of that and make those areas of the community a little bit more safe, so.
And I suppose, I assume there's grants to help you pay for some of that.
Well, hazard mitigation grants is where you would end up approaching that if they make those dollars available.
Or we could get folks in there to do some thinning and...
Yeah, raising it up, getting the fuels off and then creating defensible spaces out there. And there's already some in place with the golf course, but having further ones would certainly enhance that.
And I know there's some, I mean, the county after the, what was that town up north with the major slide?
Oso.
Yeah, Oso, after the Oso slide, they did a lightar analysis throughout the entire county on these slopes too. There's some problems, we've already had issues of major areas sliding away. So I don't know if that's a liability for us to consider if it's...
Not so much in Q1, Q4, but as you get closer to the river, that's identified on their landslide hazard lightar map.
And we're actually part of the county's lightar planning group, that the county was going to fly it all at one time, and we're actually signatories on that to reduce the cost dramatically. Unfortunately, they're not flying this part of the county just yet, correct? We have them now? Oh, we have them now. Great. We've got lightar mapping of that. Lightar is...
Yeah, we do, I've seen it.
It gives you a...
Is that like radar except for landslides?
Yeah, similar to that, except it just shows you scarfs on the side of the hill where the previous threats were and it actually kind of tells a story that looks through the vegetation.
It's infrared light instead of radar. L is light, lightar, same thing.
So they can actually see the ground and they can, and any geologist can usually determine where there's a history of, you know, constant slides.
It'll be amazing, when you see it, it's obvious. You'll see these slide areas and you can pick it out pretty well. But anyway, we have the maps now, so that'll be good information.
But that's something we're looking at too in terms of any liabilities that we might want to... So of course, the problem is we've got some of that slide happening around our high-flow bypass lines, our storm drains going down.
Existing sliding.
Mark, what would be the reason you would say maybe not to this?
The, after they approached us, the thing that made me most worried or concerned, or to even check in, I shouldn't even say concern, is that if there's any infrastructure there, that we don't inherit those existing maintenance costs just to incur the benefit of urban forestry. But we've identified that we're going to get very specific in that regard so that you guys, or the city in general, will be able to answer that question before you agree on a conveyance.
In other words, infrastructure that's not ours, but we might not be aware.
Exactly.
I mean, I don't know why the BPA doesn't have, I'm not sure why the BPA doesn't own that corridor.
But they have an easement.
I believe it's an easement over it.
Yeah.
That's an example. But there's at least three stormwater infrastructures in that area that we'll identify so that you can then weigh. To go back to Phil Bennett's comment, the, as it sits, the quality is high. The maintenance obligation is low in comparison to areas inside the city. But the invasives are generally around the perimeters. And having it city-owned would then make it easier to obtain grants for restoration that would then get rid of the invasives and improve the overall quality. Wouldn't allow them to march further into the existing quality habitat.
Why does Quadrant want to get rid of it?
They view this as, well, and part of the purpose tonight is to look into things this week, and I have a list of three, property tax is one of the items, that's probably why. I characterize it as they are no longer developing in the city, their projects are done. They have these little remnant parcels and issues, they're trying to get out of town. Clean up the issues.
Just to check boxes as they're getting, wrapping up the project, yeah.
So I put it in that category, but we'll check into the property tax implications.
They're not forestry properties because of steep slopes, they can't, it has no value.
Are there more Quadrant properties still there?
There are a handful of other Quadrant-owned properties in the city.
All right. Now, I understand there's a bit of a dilemma in timing here. Although you say we could take this to the meeting of the 27th for a council, up or down, that doesn't give Mountain Sound Greenway or Bonnie kind of an answer in time for them to prep this and put this into their agenda for that night's evening's occasion. So Bob, what do they need, Bob?
I suggested and encourage them to not put it on the program. Obviously, council hasn't voted on it, but they could certainly introduce it. If the council were to prove it on the 27th, they could still have it on the agenda as more or less a surprise announcement. They can certainly do that if they wanted to.
Breaking news announcement.
Yeah. But they would suggest it would be a work in progress otherwise, but we are not committing to anything at this telling time.
That's not incentive for me to make a rush to sit.
The only thing I would say, I'm not in a rush to meet a dinner unless, unless, unless I'm invited to eat. But unless it meant losing it to King County.
There's no danger of it right now unless Quadrant got the feeling that talking with us is no longer productive. They've been patient.
They prefer to get it off their property list this year. They've been talking to us for several months. But it's here nor there. I didn't commit to anything and they know that, so.
All right, thank you. I don't know if there's anything else more, but I suspect that the response would be similar, but I just, but it doesn't sound like anybody's saying there's big red flags and no, don't do this. Or at least Mayor, and it sounds like Phil's pretty enthusiastic about it.
Highly, yes. We would prepare an agenda bill for next Monday night and then place it on the City Council for possible action on the 27th. The first task this week is to read their draft deed. I won't call it a quick claim deed, but they have all four properties in one draft deed right now under review of the city attorney.
And I may be off base here, but I do at least think we should make the tribe aware if they have an opinion on this.
Just know that if a tribe owns that property, if it got converted into trust lands, it could be developed. I mean, they, you know, hold different rules.
Well, I assume Quadrant would make the same deal with them, they would, us, that if you take it over, it's held in...
Quadrant expressed interest in either conveying it to the city or to the county only. Now, we don't know what other discussions they may have had with other parties, but that's what they've told us.
And would the agreement be to not develop it, that it would always be open space?
That's correct, yeah. There's the steep slopes would prevent anything.
The Q2 is zoned mixed-use, which is designated open space in the mixed-use final plan. The other three would remain in King County jurisdiction, and I do believe their zoning is open space.
But the Q2 areas is visible from the falls, and that's been pretty much the mantra, is that nothing's developed that can be viewed from the falls. In fact, when this neighborhood was built here, we did extensive analysis, even put huge spotlights shining down into these forests and woods. Because if the trees were gone, you would get a view of some of these homes from the viewing platform at the falls. So we wanted to make sure that these forested areas were healthy and thick enough to prevent that.
There's a difference between zoning and the deed being encumbered for that. I'm asking if the deed is going to be encumbered, which would be my preference.
That's our interest and I think it's Quadrant's interest too. We would want it encumbered into perpetuity, that this would be open space into perpetuity.
That is staff's intention at this point, absolutely.
They have not proposed any language that I've seen to that effect, but we could certainly work that out with them.
I just...
I mean, with the exception of maintaining infrastructure that we have going through this, so.
Yeah, there's one way of maintaining that it will always remain open space. You can change zoning whenever you want.
Right, we've got notes on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right, with that, we move on to Parks, Public Works Committee report.
No report.
Community Development Committee.
Actually, I have a question though. Dan Marcinco, where are we at on the library next door in terms of bid process and...
We are...
I guess I should have waited for staff reports.
Yeah, we can answer.
I think that was an item we did have on there, but go ahead.
We're preparing the, working with the architect, getting the scope, and then we'll be bringing it to committee very soon.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Community Development Committee Agenda Bill 17162, Resolution 1421 for the unclassified use permit for Love Bug Pet Boutique, subject to conditions set forth in the staff report as recommended by the Planning Commission on November 6, 2017.
To read it, or no?
Yes, please.
Pursuant to... SMC 17.60.050. The Planning Commission held a public hearing and provided findings and a recommendation of approval of the City Council. Snoqualmie Municipal Code 16.10.070 provides for the City Council to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to make a decision on the unclassified use permit.
Motion, please.
That move to approve Resolution 1421 for the unclassified use permit for Love Bug Pet Boutique, subject to conditions set forth in the staff report as recommended by the Planning Commission on November 6, 2017.
Motion to second approve Agenda Bill 17162 as stated by Councilmember Sunwall. And I guess we'll just kick it to Gwen for presentation. Go ahead, Gwen, and then open it for questions and discussion.
Okay, so as Commissioner Sunwall...
So, um, as Commissioner Sunwall announced to the applicant, applied for an unclassified use permit.
Gwen, I'm sorry. Can you pull the microphone a little closer?
Sorry, I don't speak for. So, um, under our code, a kennel, which is what that, um, the pet daycare, that she's applying to do a dog daycare, a kennel at eighty thirty railroad avenue. Um, so that falls under the unclassified use permit category. So, uh, therefore a public hearing is required before the planning commission and recommendation to city council for approval. Uh, we staff took the, the applicant's proposal to planning commission on November sixth, where they reviewed the six, the six, um, staff recommendations for approval. And then after discussion added a seventh, um, requiring that the applicant shall install silencing caulking and submit acoustic information to be verified by the building department staff that the installation of the sound control material was completed in conformance with the manufacturer's standards. Um, I did speak with our building, uh, building inspector today. Uh, the applicant had provided an email saying that the, uh, I don't know if you guys are familiar with STC. I certainly am not, but I guess it's the soundproofing material and there are a range of, of noises that it, 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 that I'm having a problem thinking today, that it muffles. The applicant has provided that her STC score with this material will be between sixty two and sixty seven. Upon asking the building inspector, fifty five is the STC level, um, for a town home. So it seems that the applicant's, you know, muffling should do the trick. Did, uh, did you have any questions for me? I know that there were some questions.
Couple of background. So one, the concern with noise is that the occupant next door is a restaurant. So it's to keep them, uh, from interfering with each other, the noise, uh, materials put in. The other one, just to back up general knowledge, an un.
Unclassified use permit?
Unclassified use, your zoning law has allowed uses and unallowed uses. And every now and then we get one that is neither, that is an unclassified use. A dog daycare is an unclassified use. As such, it needs to come to us to say that's okay.
Correct. The last time we had an unclassified use permit was in two thousand and two.
Yeah.
What was that for?
My understanding is also that, um, because as, um, we, we've been looking at the noise ordinance and public safety and I'll report more on it, um, at that, uh, for my report. But my understanding is the Department of Health also gets involved with this and can, um, even though we don't have a noise ordinance that will take care of noise per se during the day, it actually falls under the jurisdiction of the Department of Health.
That's correct.
So could you just comment on that and how that would work in terms of if the restaurant is complaining about noise?
And the applicant has received preliminary approval from the Department of Health prior to applying for the unclassified use permit with the city of Snoqualmie. Um, there are provisions for noise in the staff reports. Uh, we do have in chapter nine, public disturbance noise, and there are decibel levels in there that provide for noise control. Also, the, um, there's another condition in here that they would need to meet all, um, applicable codes of title eight, which is the King County Public Health Department, which also has a, a noise designation for barking dogs. A nuisance dog is considered to be a dog that's barking for fifteen minutes continuously.
So according to the King County ordinance, if one of their animals is barking for fifteen minutes, they have to take action to mitigate that. They also have to have, correct me or I go wrong, uh, an area for timeout for the pets that need to chill out and be quiet.
I still love that.
Kennels to allow them to sleep, which are a little quieter. So, I mean, the health department has some pretty stringent rules on dog daycares.
So walk me through the process. Um, I'm, I'm next door at the restaurant. What happened?
So is it right next to the restaurant?
Walk me through the process.
Isn't there a pet store in the restaurant?
That's the existing use is currently a retail pet store.
Oh, you're going to switch it from a pet store to?
An ad.
Ad.
It's an addition.
Right next to it?
No.
No.
No, same space, same space.
But that'll be the, the space that will house the, the doggy daycare will be closed off from the rest of the retail space. Yes.
So help me, um, think through this. So I'm sitting next door at the restaurant or on the restaurant owner, or heck, I don't know, I'm parked outside at the grocery store. Um, and this dog's been barking for fifteen minutes. How does that look? Does the restaurant owner, who do they complain to? Who enforces that? Is, are, is Snoqualmie police supposed to go and measure the decibels? Are they supposed to enforce that? Are we supposed to wait for a Seattle Health Department person to come out and tell the dog to be quiet?
Well, we do contract with the animal control for King County. However, I do believe it would be appropriate to call the police.
We would be first responders.
Yes.
I think they have one animal control for half the counties.
Yeah, yes. So no overnight boarding will be done. That's just during the day. The hours will be from six thirty AM to six thirty PM, Monday through Friday. Public notice was sent, uh, to app, our property owners within five hundred feet as well as tenants in five hundred feet. And I have a list of that.
Mark, correct me if I'm remembering part of the conversation, Planning Commission. If by chance one of the, and, uh, sorry, hypothetical. If by chance we were, have a chronic nuisance pet at the doggy daycare, uh, this use can be pulled back.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah, the process is that we would receive a complaint. There'd be a public hearing, a recommendation by planning commission, and then the city council could revoke it.
Can you?
Specifically, um, for, I don't want to call it a nuisance, but impacts on adjacent businesses and properties.
So Mark, while you're standing there, could you also, I tried to stop you. Can you also talk about the fact that this was a use that we identified in the comprehensive plan, I believe? Validate that, please.
Yeah.
It's a retail.
It'll be, it'll be two things. The comp plan is very broad and high policy, and you're not going to find the level of detail for doggy daycare. Um, but you will find historic downtown and retail, uh, specific to that area highly encouraged. This adds a use, conditioned use to that existing retail. So the comp plan is very specifically calls for, uh, supporting retail and businesses, especially existing businesses. So at that high level, it meets the comp plan policy. If you really want to dive in, the comp plan also has, uh, a policy about quality of life, noise, odors. Uh, and so the, the conditioning of this use achieves consistency with the comprehensive plan. But I, I must remind you that our comp plan is not highly, or our municipal code is not highly detailed. It doesn't contain, for instance, doggy daycare. So the closest designation was kennel. And while it's conditioned and the current owner says that they're not going to have overnight staying, we conservatively said through this process of, uh, uh, unclassified use permit, that we could then, uh, make a conservative call, condition it and have it fit in better with the surrounding uses. The alternative would have been, um, that it's not a kennel, that it is something else, which is not in our code, but that the health department governs and regulates it, therefore they do not need a conditional use permit. We did not go that route. We believe by managing it and conditioning it that we could achieve what the comp plan and municipal code call for.
Yeah. So, okay. Um, we've had Joe Citizen drop off his dog and something happens. What happens to that dog if he's not picked up by the end of the day?
The applicant has laid arrangements with Snoqualmie Valley Hospital for care of any dogs that need it.
Whoa, 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 back up, back up. Not Snoqualmie Valley Hospital. Not sure they're allowed.
But an animal hospital has.
Animal hospital.
Okay.
Veterinary hospitals, to be specific, to provide emergency veterinary services should the need arise.
But emergency veterinary service would be the dog needs a place to stay?
If it needed medical treatment.
But I think what the question was.
I'm not asking that question. I'm asking if the dog is not picked up.
Oh, yes. Would you like to address that?
Well, the short of it, overnight stays at the facility, you're not allowed.
Yeah, but something's got to happen to the dog.
Owner of the facility and the owner of the pet would have to figure something out.
Hello, my name is Phyllis Duznak. I reside at six four two two Silent Creek Avenue Southeast. Um, the dog will have housing at either my home or, uh, an employee's home. If, if the owner does not, uh, collect it by closing time.
So it's kind of like if you don't pick your kid up in daycare, they stay there until they pick him up. And if they don't, they take him home.
I was one of those parents that never picked up on time. I'm just thinking that.
So I, I'm just curious, because on that point, I see those hours in the applicant letter and I just heard them. But the, the permit doesn't restrict the hours. The permit as written would permit twenty four hours. It, in other words, it has no restriction on hours.
So we could.
Let me, let me ask, answer it this way. Normal business hour, so if, if right now she put up a sign that said, hey, we close at six thirty. Six weeks later, she comes in and says, you know what, that business is great. I'm going to stay up until eight thirty. That would be consistent with what we would allow. Soon as it crossed into something like the noise ordinance, ten, ten PM, eleven PM or overnight, then as it's currently written and as I'm assuming would be acted on, would be in violation.
But it wouldn't be in violation of the thing that we're, it's being proposed tonight because it doesn't have any restriction on hours?
Correct. It does not.
If, yeah, if, if, if action's taken and you don't add that condition to address that concern, that's correct. We, we saw it at the planning commission level, staff to planning commission level, some sort of maximum to get some understanding of what the, the total impact is.
So, for example, Councilmember Mayhew, you could make a motion to add a condition that hours of operation shall not take place between the hours of ten PM and four or five AM or whatever it was.
Well, and the only thing I would say to that, and I think you're probably saying is, I don't care how long the store is open to sell dog food or whatever, or pet toys, right? Doggy treats, but the ability, the boarding function of that would have to end by a certain time. And I'm not even sure I want to dictate what that is because I'm not in that marketplace. But I, there is this, how late is too late and is relying upon the noise ordinance that is sort of there right now is, which is ten o'clock. Is that enough? Or do you want to pare that back? I, I, I'm hesitant to start naming what hours a business can stay open. Um, but for particular uses, I guess I don't necessarily have a problem with that.
But, um, well, help me, well, help me out with the Department of Health thing, um, because I'm not sure you're classified as a kennel per se through them. You would have to do additional things to allow overnight stay.
Correct. They have different, uh, criteria for how they, um, regulate the kennels versus the daycare.
Yeah. She, she's regulated as a doggy daycare.
Fine, but if we don't limit it, I'm not saying she would, but if we don't limit it, she could go take care of that business. And without us even knowing, she could have a day overnight doggy daycare. I mean, slumber party's everywhere.
So let's just ask the question.
Do we actually specify that as part of the daycare regulation? Does it put any parameters? Or does it just leave a generalized not overnight?
I have to, uh, request a permit for a daycare. I have to request a permit for a groomer, and I would have to request a permit for a kennel. And I'm only requesting the permit for the daycare.
Can I, can I, can, let's just put the question to you. Do you have any problem with the restriction between like the hours of ten or five in the morning or ten PM and five?
No, I, I don't have any concerns about that. I have other ways to grow that business besides doing overnight boarding.
I, I'm not sure. I need to get into, can we just merely restrict that this is, we are allowing this uncategorized use of doggy daycare as defined by the King County Department of Health?
Which is a condition in the staff report.
Which is already a condition in the staff report?
Yes.
Which county Department of Health limits?
And those restrictions are what?
Oh, they're amazing. There has to be a timeout zone. There, it, there has to be kennels specifically for dogs to sleep in that have reduced light and everything else. There has to be odor control. You can go through the list. It was.
The use after the hours.
It was more, I do not know the hours per se.
But it doesn't allow them to stay overnight.
But it doesn't allow overnight. I mean.
The applicant doesn't, isn't concerned. I'm saying if you want to assuage any concerns, throw a condition in there that the applicant has no concern with that.
Well, what Gwen was saying, I think the condition already exists that we are approving a doggy daycare per the King County definition, which does not allow overnight.
That's unlike you to do a conjecture that you think it does, but you're not sure.
It's in here. So I have a question.
It's only nine o'clock, Brian. Come on.
So you mean, we keep, odor, odor control keeps coming up. Um, and here it states that artificial turf has drainage holes and a rubber backing. Where, where will these be located? Are they outside or the inside or?
So I have, the retail suite is in the front. Then you walk through a short hallway and you get to the back suite that was constructed. And the, uh, elimination areas will be in that back suite in, uh, low profile bins where the dogs can step into it, do their business, and all of the contents can be cleaned and sanitized.
And that's indoors?
Sidewalk.
It's indoors.
It's indoors.
It is indoors. Okay.
This room has no doorway to the outside except through the retail space.
What, uh, what, um, services, I guess, what, uh, will you be having dogs walking out, like, out to the park, Sandy Cove Park? Will there be a, will you be using other city resources in the area, uh, for these puppies?
That'll be a, uh, optional service for the pet owner to decide if they want to, um, purchase a dog walk to Sandy Cove Park.
And I did speak with King County Department of Public Health representative and, um, asked about the type of elimination material. And they, I asked, you know, it's by a restaurant and they said, no, they have them in Seattle next to coffee shops all the time. So they were not concerned.
Can I ask you, you mentioned a little bit earlier the noise ordinance. I looked, SMC nine dot three six, is that correct?
Yes.
Which I looked at and I didn't see any decibel limit there.
It refers back to King County code.
We'll be talking about it under my staff report, but there is no, um, basically during the day, we effectively don't have a noise ordinance. It is not based on decibels. It's based on hours.
There are some, it refers back to the King County code or the WACS, which do have decibel levels in there?
For this use, for the permitted use.
For the permitted use of the daycare, there are noise consideration through the Department of Health. So while our noise ordinance remains lacking in this area, we have protections while we work to fix this noise ordinance.
She will be held to a higher standard than any other business in the city or any other person in the city until we fix our own noise ordinance.
The dogs will.
The dogs. Yes, not the owner, the dogs. Correct. She may be as loud as she would like to be, for now.
Was this unanimously recommended by the planning commission?
It was with the condition seven added about the silencing material and the acoustic information.
Are we ready for?
Call the question.
Well, okay, that, that was a question. I don't know if that was a statement. Was that a statement?
Jim has one more, Melinda.
The, the, the other question I had, I'm just. The, the two, the two, they're sort of related. They have to do with the park and dogs going to the park. And I sort of have this image in my mind of one dog walker with twenty dogs going down railroad avenue while the train is trying, uh, you know, and I'm just sort of thinking, how does this all kind of fit? And then I'm thinking, then they get to the park and I know that other cities have had problems with dogs approaching the first structure that looks like a rock as opposed to waiting till the park. And then, and then I'm just sort of wondering about, um, impacts on the park. And so have, you kind of assessed kind of this dog walking to the park and how that might sort of impact the economic development of the area and the park itself?
Um, that subject was discussed at planning commission. No condition was added. Um, and walking twenty dogs at once could in theory happen. There's no limitation on that. I, not being a dog walker, I wouldn't recommend it.
What's the?
There's a limitation on how many dogs.
But it's public property and, and this would introduce a use that would allow commercial dog walking in that area. In theory, that's allowed right now. If, if I piled them in a van, it's a public place. Um, but from my experience, um, the, uh, commercial dog walkers in San Valley, Idaho, uh, end up being a net benefit. The reason being if, if, uh, Joe Citizen goes to the park, sees a pile of dew, the first thing they say is, oh, it's that dog walker. I know it is. And so they have a burden that they carry with that, um, and can easily do that with existing infrastructure, garbage cans and so forth. So I'm not so much worried about this application and twenty dogs. I see it as a benefit to the existing conditions, which a homeowner right now is not picking up after themselves. So, uh, additional awareness and so forth. What I, what I'm not certain is dog urine. Dog came in my yard, peed on the lawn. That was a dead spot for about eight weeks. Um, that I, uh, affects the turf. I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, and, and in San Francisco, they have problems with dogs that don't wait till the park because they like things that look like trees and. till the park because they like things that look like trees and rocks. And so structures that were put up to protect the park from vehicles ended up, of course, they have long summers there and that ended up being quite a problem. They had to figure out how to clean those areas.
But that was a problem just from general public. That wasn't because of the business there. I mean, it was, it was...
San Francisco, I did say.
No, 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 sorry, the general public of dogs. Sorry, I wasn't talking about people. But not because there was a business there. It was just because it was a popular spot, popular, but so I, I'm, I'm struggling with whether or not they should be held Ohio standard just because it's, it's a business that happens to have a few more dogs than the neighbors that already live on the street.
Right. So I'm, I'm just trying to think through, are we introducing some new very different use or is it really kind of similar to what's already there? Is there something we need to be concerned about?
I can't speak for kind of what you're talking about in terms of the, you know, up at the top of the park, but don't forget that park regularly floods every year. So that's not, the dogs aren't going to cause the damage there. The floodwaters are going to cause the damage in that park. So, I mean, point taken about to and from the park, but just keep in mind that...
I think it's an opportunity for this business owner to demonstrate their goodwill and being a good citizen to make sure stuff's picked up after that. And I have no reason to believe as a resident of the city and a business owner that she wouldn't want to do that. Of course, if that was not happening, there, there could be recourse, but I suspect it will happen.
The revocation process and what I'd also like to add in general, pet services, pet care and pet retail frequently comes up from input on the ridge as needed. People generally work somewhere else during the day. They have not quite as many dogs as where I'm from, but a high amount. And so that general use...
I'm not saying...
To tell you the truth, I, I get a phone call and I either fish it out to John Cooper or I take it myself. In this case, aside from being able to call the Health Department and go through that bureaucracy, most likely then I keep, since I live right down here in downtown, I keep my eyes open. If we saw an instance of that, we would document it to have a record and then we would pursue fixing it before some sort of revocation. Fixing it would be, hey, if we saw such and such, or even one degree less, we've heard such and such, please be aware of it, that this is the perception of what may be happening. A kind of a soft code enforcement first try, then something a little bit more to get results. I would say the third or fourth try would be the actual revocation notice.
We did get a petition with three signatures supporting this business as there is nothing like it in Snoqualmie. There are several in North Bend and they're frequently full.
North Bend sends their pickup trucks. I see them down my street several times a week and the business is heading out to North Y, North Bend.
We could keep it here.
This is how we balance the budget. This is the revenue we have been looking for.
It's gonna do it all.
Since it's not midnight yet, there is one thing, and this is not required, but I will add, it can raise to the level where dog DNA testing is called for. And I've worked in a place like that where they can identify the poop and infraction with a dog on file for a condo association.
Their business is doing that now.
It, it can get to that level. We have no intent of taking it to that level.
There's some...
I can see a date line on this.
Trail issue. I don't know that...
All right. Now?
Now, call the question.
Now, please.
Move to call the question.
All right. All those in favor of calling the question?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. With that discussion is done, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item prior to action? Seeing no one move forward, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Congratulations. Look forward to helping you have a successful business downtown. Good to have a local resident doing that, too. All right, with that, any other report for Community Development Committee?
Uh, no, because I think we've moved the sound ordinance mostly to public safety, so.
I think so.
Okay. Finance Administration Committee, Agenda Bill 17161, professional services agreement with, for interim chief finance officer.
Due to the resignation of the chief financial officer, the city desires the services of Robert Orton to serve in the role of interim chief finance officer. Robert Orton was appointed as the interim finance officer at a special council meeting held on November 6, 2017. Move to approve a professional service agreement for an interim chief financial officer, Robert Orton.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to approve Agenda Bill 17161 as stated by Councilmember Pruitt. Any discussion or questions, Council?
There were a couple updates to the agreement. Could you just summarize them?
Sure, and Ms. Branson's going to pass out, well, just one.
Okay.
She's passing out a revised agreement that includes a provision in Section 8A that would allow the city to waive the otherwise applicable insurance requirements on written confirmation from the city's risk pool, the Washington City's Insurance Authority, that Mr. Orton's services could be covered as a temporary employee under the city's existing policies, which would also allow him to drive city vehicles while on city business and be under the umbrella of their auto coverage as well as the other coverages that, that they offer. They typically don't permit that for consulting arrangements, but for something like this where the individual is, is in fact filling an existing FTE position on a temporary interim basis, they have informed us they would do that. I, I would want something more official in writing before we would make that waiver determination, but that's the language that I added here to, to allow for that. I think there's been, so that's the one change that's been made. There was some questions raised about termination for material breach versus not. This agreement has a much shorter term, notice of termination provision in it than the previous one that, that's been the subject of conversation in front of council. And as like the previous agreement, this has language that says if there is a material breach, then there's no payment for any work done from the date of the notice until the actual effective date of termination. So this draft shortens the, the notice period to 15 days. If there was a termination for material breach, then there would be no additional work and no services paid from date of the notice till its effective date 15 days later. Council could shorten that further if it wanted or if you wanted to, to ask us for, you know, a more extended material breach termination provision, happy to add that. I was trying to address the concerns that I had heard raised earlier through the, sort of the, the simplest drafting approach.
But if there, Rob, hypothetical again, and just in general, if there, well, I'll just go, if there are legal activities conducted in the course of doing business, I'm sorry, but the, that is cause for termination and it should be immediate, not 15 days. So there needs to be a provision in here for termination in all of our contracts, termination for cause, and it should be zero. And then depending on what the cause is, there's a negotiation back off of that. But if it's egregious enough, you got to have the option that it's then.
I think out of this language, you effectively have that, but it, because they're not to do any work after, other than as necessary to wind it down, this kind of contract, I don't know what those wind down activities would be. And they don't get paid in the event of any material breach, so.
They, they do, it does say that upon receipt of this document, they are to immediately commence, immediately commence to end work. Maybe just end work, I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but immediately commence to end work in a reasonable and orderly manner. So if, if the breach were determined to be egregious, Bob could walk in the door and say, you're done, and that's the reasonable amount of time. That is a better out than what we've had in the previous contract we've been, or previous, previous contract we've been discussing lately.
So given the condition that this is Rob...
We can't operate that way.
I have no problem. Well, no, we're going to go through contract review, contract administration review coming up. I think this ought to be one of the things we look at is termination or cause clause in our contracts in general. In the specific case with Rob, I don't have an issue, okay? But I do bring up the general issue that we need to look at our boilerplate contract and have a clause in there for termination for cause.
So I will say that just, I think we need to kind of revisit our history here. I'm not comfortable, I don't care who, what the name is. I don't care what history he or she has of the city. I'm not comfortable making exceptions because we know the guy or we know the gal, right? Just fast forward six months from now.
Other than you need a chief financial officer.
I understand that. But fast forward six months from now, and if something had gone south, this is recorded, I would not want that to come back on this council and say, ah, see? Good old boys network, right? They, they knew him, he'd worked for the city, we let him pass on this because we didn't want to do the extra 15 minutes of work to tighten up the contract and we let this one through. I'm not, I'm not ready to sign off on that. And do I think anything's going to happen? Absolutely not. But that doesn't matter because as a steward of...
Can I make a suggestion that you, can I make a suggestion that you go ahead and make a motion to amend the contract to include language that would make a material breach terminable, however you want to phrase it, but just...
Here, here's the thing that I think, and I need a legal opinion on this. To me, material breach is a breach of anything in here. So it could be the fact that he hired a subcontractor. Now, do I think hiring a subcontractor means he needs to leave five minutes from now? Probably not. But if he broke the law...
That's what I mean. Come up with what...
We needed to find it for his case, for any, for whoever signed the contract. He needs to have some, some certainty that just because Councilmember Summerville didn't like him, that, which I do, by the way, are you still here? Just because there wasn't some whimsical thing like that, that he could be terminated in, in, you know, on a moment's notice. So I'm trying to build in, there seems to be, there's something between material...
We'd rule out the being too boring part.
Yeah, well, yeah, too boring, for sure. But there's got to be somewhere between material and, and criminal, right?
Can you quickly phrase that so that we can make a motion to, to have the contract amended for that?
Well, I'm not, I'm not...
But Councilmember Summerville, I thought you read it and said you, you did feel that this was an improvement and did satisfy your concerns in the current language.
It's an improvement. It is an improvement. But as I very rarely do, I agree with Brian on this, that we need to have something a little bit tighter than 15 days. I can't have a guy...
Brian's got the language.
All right. Move to revise the unless, the material breach comment to be, man, I get back to where it was. Unless terminated for consultant's material breach or cause, the consultant shall be paid or reimbursed for all hours worked and eligible expenses incurred up to termination days unless all payments are made. And work is to be terminated immediately unless other time period negotiated with city.
Okay.
Motion, a second, to add amendment as stated by Councilmember Holloway.
That's pretty good.
I want to give the option. I mean, if it's...
But Bob is cringing.
If Rob walked out and peed on the rock to the park, I mean, we don't need to terminate him right then and there.
He needs 15 days.
He needs 15 days.
I don't know if this is in broad daylight, you might want it in...
Does that work, run work?
Work. Bob?
I think so. I was going to play the tape back to get the wording.
Yeah, me too.
Can you read it one more time?
Can you read it one more time?
Maybe without stumbling this time?
Through part of it.
You went pretty fast.
I gave him my notes.
Just the, the part that you're changing.
Unless, all right, unless terminated for consultant's material breach or cause, the consultant shall be paid and reimbursed for all hours worked and eligible expenses incurred up to termination date unless all payments previously made. And to terminate work immediately or under some time period negotiated with city.
Yeah, thanks for going much slower that time.
I'll listen to the tape.
I'm just a chihuahua on caffeine, that's all.
Seriously writing.
Bob?
That's fine. I think that will work.
Could you make a distinction between criminal violation and a civil violation?
In that language?
No, no.
In general.
What I was going to say is it's, there are some contracts that, for example, provide for severance, severance pay or separation pay, except in the event of a material breach, which is defined as misfeasance, malfeasance, or violation of a criminal law.
And some material breach covers it.
So you could do it that way, although I heard Councilmember Summerville saying he wanted something...
If that's the definition of a material breach, I am totally fine with that.
So, and, and then you could, instead of, I think, what, what was articulated, you're looking at the first sentence that says specifies a termination date at least 15 days after the notice semi-colonated, however, in the event of...
I would say 15 days is fine, except in material breach.
Except provided, however, in the, in the event of a material breach.
It's immediate or as negotiated with the city.
Termination may be effective immediately or on such other period as the city determines.
Yes.
Yes.
Gives, not negotiated, but gives the city...
Yes.
The authority.
Works for me.
I don't know if it was...
I don't know if you want to go on to another item for the moment.
Move to revise the contract as stated.
Second.
Are you pulling back the prior motion?
Yeah, I'll pull back the prior motion and make his words...
Okay, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Revocation? Okay, and then amend to this one?
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. I did, I don't think it was intended that way, but there were, some of the comments made it sound like a, a violation of a clause and this agreement would be criminal or unlawful, I guess. I just wanted to make a quick distinction.
No, what I'm, the example is a material breach has now been defined for me, right?
Criminal activity took place, embezzlement.
If he broke clause six and hired a subcontractor and we determined that was a problem, he would have 15 days.
Right. But hiring a subcontractor would not be a criminal offense or a...
Depends who the subcontractor was, but yeah.
It may still be a material breach of the contract.
Be more of a civil matter, not a criminal one. You know, we're just not going to have the police chief come and arrest him or something. Rob, I have no idea what you've been doing to stir up this tempest, but...
It was that budget, budget presentation.
You know, we didn't get grand kids.
I mean, it put Matt LaSalle asleep. He just now woke up.
So I have, awkward, this is awkward. I have a question about this for the city attorney, which I believe I cannot ask except in executive session.
Then the council could certainly add, add an executive session to the agenda and recess. Executive session for purposes of...
You'll have to postpone acting on this contract and it's left to the executive session. I mean, we could go into a very quick one right now, just don't exit into the back room.
It's a very quick question. So whatever's the best way to handle that.
We're going to just exit for one minute to an executive session. You can all stay here. We're just going to, let's all shift into the back room.
Mayor, the, the executive session would be for the purpose of discussing potential litigation under 42, RCW 42.30.110, paren, one, paren, small roman numeral one, sorry, paren, small i, paren, two, small roman numeral, which is defined as discussing with legal counsel the potential ramifications of a proposed course of conduct.
Okay, what he said.
Jody's going to kill me tomorrow. You guys are throwing all this crazy stuff in here. here.
And so, and you can tell, even like Los Angeles Police Department, take for instance, they early on authorized drones. They put them out there, they quickly took them back. They've been sitting in the, if you will, closet for quite some time now. And just within the last month, they put it out again to try it again. So I think it was just the, the, the technology was moving so quick and we were not able to keep up with that technology. And we just saw the, the benefits of it and we threw it out there without sitting back and doing the foundation of setting the policies, the requirements, what is our true meaning and uses of it? Instead of doing that like we should have, we threw it out there and just started using it. And, and actually where I came from, that's what we did. We just actually did, threw it out there really and started using it and, and started learning that way.
The proper uses, it's great. The improper uses gets you in trouble really fast.
Well, Council, for the sake of time, I'm going to suggest, we, unless you want to be here until 10:30, you'll have more opportunities to talk about the drone item. So with that-
Thank you both, by the way. That's it for my report.
All right. So with that, we'll move on to committee of the whole. Bob, I'll kick it over to you for an update.
All right. Just a couple councilors here. Hands me out.
Been a bit of a long slog. If any other councilmembers may want to take a-
We have to have a quorum, so-
Okay, Catherine's back, so we're good.
I, I'm going to talk about two issues today. One is the, one in front of you, I'm calling operational consulting and advisory services. That's the issue about taking a look at several things and I'll, I'll read them through here. And the other one would be the executive search and recruitment for the finance position. When you have in front of you, or notes that I compiled after speaking to a couple of consultants, and they're suggesting examples of the general themes a consultant could review, and that's the first four bullet points. Operational analysis, controls, control evaluation and design, the risk assessment and process assessment. And then there's some specific areas, based on my conversations with one consultant in particular from Clark Newber, and then he mentioned the first three, which are entity-wide controls, how we set the proper tone, the contracting practices, and then the third one is the uniform guidance, administrative controls and cost principles. He also mentioned the other six there, or five, as possible other areas to consider that you may need to get into when you start doing the assessment on the above three, or using the above three, which is the, and then six are the segregation of duties, which came up last week in Finance Administration Committee. Cash receipting, including utility billing and VNO tax collections. Cash dispersments, including travel and credit cards. Payroll. IT functions as they relate to the accounting processes. And then the sixth one is financial reporting and closing. The last paragraph, the third line starts out operational. He says efficiency and compliance. I should also add the word effectiveness to that, so it'd be effectiveness, efficiency and compliance. I dropped that somehow in my latest draft. But this is a start for discussion that I can take back to the Finance Administration Committee next Tuesday for further discussion. This will be the body or the main elements of a request or proposal, and then we can put the rest of the, the legal wording behind all of this, in our request, and get some responses back in the form of proposals from several area-wide agencies or firms that do this type of work.
And we would have the ability, I think I'd said, whatever, how many weeks ago, that I, I personally would like to see three-plus people or entities that would essentially, in my, I guess, what I would say is interview for the job, to, to do this. Is that something that we would have the right to, to hear and pick?
Absolutely. I would expect to put it out to as many as that are, that do this type of work in the area. We may even have to go to the region, but I'm not sure of the other companies, but I'm aware of at least three or four in the immediate area. There's probably at least that many, if not, you know, more than that. But there's several firms that do this kind of work, well-qualified. And then we could bring those back, obviously, for council consideration.
Great.
I would expect the council would want to provide some of the analysis as well, since you'll be doing the approval of any contract you may decide to retain a firm, so.
I think the most efficient way to do that would be to send it around to two or three of the committees to make sure all the council members were briefed on it and then see if there's some consensus coming out of the committees when it came to council, otherwise that could be a fairly complicated process. Typically, we'd make a recommendation on RFQ or-
Well, the only thing I, the, the reason I thought, we can do that, but I, I do feel like there should probably be some discussion in, in open, in open chambers, because I think it's important. Again, part of what got us here, I think, was we're trying to rebuild trust within the community. And so I think if they see, if they're able to see that level of engagement, since most people can't come to a committee meeting, if they're able to see that level of engagement that we're doing our due diligence, I think that helps, hopefully, ensure that they start to build a little more goodwill and trust in the process. It doesn't have to be three hours long. I'm just saying, I think at some point it needs to culminate here where we have some opportunities.
Council certainly can look at any and all proposals that they, that they can help select the folks that would come in for interviews, if you like. It's ultimately your decision.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have, we have a timeframe on this?
I can, I'll expect to bring it to a committee next week. If, if this is the general areas that council would like to, I think this covers it, as what we discussed the last couple of meetings. If there's something that's missing, I certainly would like to hear that. For instance, the segregation of duties, you pointed out to me last week at the F and A Committee. Seems like an obvious one, but I think it might be covered in there already, but I think we just spelled it out even more succinctly.
And I think it's a sub of process assessment, a segregation of duties. I would also put in their scope of control, which goes back to Sean's question of who has what signing authority for what things and what level of the org that scope of control exists at.
I think that's generally covered underneath the controls, evaluation and design, but we can certainly, if it's specific, we, what was the language again?
Scope of control. That's the right? We'll get there, okay. I'm an engineer, not a business guy. He would know the right term.
Oh, well, I'll check that item. I've got it on my notes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions on this? All right, I'll get it back to F and A next week. The second one is the executive search and recruitment. I deliberately not called it a particular position. Right now, it's Chief Financial Officer. There will be a proposal coming to F and A next week on a title change to obviously a, a finance director. And along with that, there will be a, a job description, and there'll also be a, a second job description to address the administrative services director position as well, with that, that, if, if council, in fact, decides or approves a title change with a job description for finance director, it'll obviously take those responsibilities off of the administrative services director. In discussions with Deborah Vigil, who's currently in that position, there are other responsibilities that that position has picked up, administrative services director, that will add to the job description. We'll show those to the F and A Committee. And I've got several examples of job descriptions for finance director. It's a benchmark position across a number of cities, obviously. In some cities, they're smaller than us, it might be called the finance director slash treasurer slash city clerk, but for the most part, we're in that, in that category now, where finance directors becoming more and more common among cities. So I'll bring that back.
So what does that mean? Does, would the finance director continue to report then to admin services or be totally separate?
No. It'll be a separate director position, reporting directly to the city administrator.
Okay.
Thank you for that, that question.
Are you looking at shifting some other employees that don't currently report to the CFO that would, in the future, then report to the finance director that currently don't?
I can give you examples of the positions, but the, all, all, all the finance positions would be, it, right now, it includes the, the, make sure I get the titles correct. You saw, you were introduced to Jerry Knutson and Drew Boute tonight, those two positions. And then accounts receivable, accounts, I think accounts pay was ready, you went in one of those positions. We've got payroll, we've got the VNO taxes, we've got the utility billing, all of the finance positions would follow. I think there's a total then of six, six positions that would be reporting to the finance director. And then if you're interested, I, I sent out on Friday to nine executive search firms, or requests or invitation to submit proposals. They're due next Monday. They cover every, every company that I'm aware of that does these types of the executive searches for public entities. There's two in Washington, one in California, two in Texas, and then it goes all the way over to Florida and Georgia, as well as Illinois. Some really good search firms out there. And I expect that not all of them are going to want to submit a proposal. Some don't do work in this area, the Northwest, but there are some that are others, others that are trying to, to gain entry into this marketplace. So I think they'd be very interested in submitting a proposal as well. And I'll evaluate those on Monday, I'll obviously brief the mayor, and then bring those to the Finance Administration Committee on Tuesday night as an agenda bill.
Are you satisfied with the list that you have now? Are you still looking for potentially additions to that list of who you've sought RFPs from?
I'm generally satisfied. I, I've gotten, I've gotten responses back from, I think, five of the nine so far that are very enthused about it. I think the other, there's two in Washington haven't, haven't even responded yet. I expect those two would be also interested. There are just two that are outside of the general area that I haven't heard back from yet, but that doesn't mean that they won't respond. Then the third item was the conflict of interest slash ethics hearing officer, which I'll ask Bob Sterbank to cover. He's been doing some work on that.
Thanks, Bob. So I have reached out and can report on some potential names of folks who might be interested in, in serving in this capacity. And there, there are four, there could be more. We've not put out a formal RFP or RFQ. We certainly could do that, depending on council's feedback here. The first person is Steve DiGiulio. Steve's the managing partner, Foster Pepper Law Firm, longtime municipal law practitioner and instructor. And for the last 26 years, he's provided the municipal ethics training at the AWC Conference to new city council members around the state. Second person is Bruce Carter. He's a current member of the Seattle Ethics Commission. In 2015, he served as its chair. He was a longtime Assistant United States Attorney in Seattle from 1977 to 2001, where he handled primarily corruption and fraud cases. And he's also a former municipal, Seattle Municipal Court Judge Protem. He advised that his status with a bar is that he has a, a senior status, which sort of allows you to put your license to practice law on, on hold. Our code does call for this position to be someone who is an, an attorney. Doesn't say licensed to practice in Washington, or doesn't specify further. So I need to follow with a bar to determine what limitations, if any, there are posed by that, that status in terms of his ability to, to help. But he is interested and had forwarded me his resume. Person number three, Wayne Tanaka. He's a partner in the firm of Ogden Murphy Wallace, which also has a, an established municipal practice. Mr. Tanaka was, has been for many years, decades, the city attorney for the city of Issaquah. And he, I know, applied to be, and I think maybe one of the ethics officers for the city of Port Townsend. And then the fourth person is Jennifer Robertson. She's a partner in the Northwest Urban Law Firm. She's also a member of the Bellevue City Council, has been, I think, for a number of terms, and she serves as the city attorney for the town of Ruston and the city of Vader, and has also served as an attorney or specialty legal counsel for a number of special purpose districts and cities. And she also had applied and is, I think, one of the candidates for ethics officer for the city of Port Townsend. So we, we have four folks of varying backgrounds who have either, you know, taught or served as, as an ethics officer, or, you know, are, are available in that capacity. So I'm happy to follow up further, issue a formal RFP if the council prefer, or, you know, bring folks to the council for interview process or further selection.
I just have one question. How did you come up with those names? Are they people you knew, or did you do a Google search, which would be fine? I just, I'm just wondering what the, what the process was.
I know most of them, at least to some degree professionally. Mr. DiGiulio, I reached out to. Mr. Carter, I became aware of because I contacted the executive director of the, of the commission because he does do some volunteer ethics officer service for the city of Kirkland, although he's not currently admitted in Washington, the executive director. And he put me in touch with Mr. Carter. And then the other two I learned about through talking with other colleagues who pointed me towards Port Townsend and their recent search.
Do you feel like your relationship with any of them would jeopardize the neutrality of, of such a undertaking?
No.
No. So you're wanting to know how we would like you to proceed?
Correct. Thank you.
And are there options, or you just need to hear from us?
Well-
Yeah.
Right. What, yeah, it really is, issue something further, or bring you more names, or bring one or more of these folks to you, you know, through, for an interview process, or something more formal.
And all four of them are interested, or you didn't?
I've talked to two of them, the other two I have not, but I know that they had submitted for the Port Townsend position relatively recently, maybe in the last year, I think. And they had issued an RFP or RFQ for that position.
Was the Port Townsend Commission just to set a, did they have a matter in front of them that needed it?
They did.
That needed? Okay.
And they did not have someone under contract to handle those things.
Okay. A, I would suggest that we get their names and resumes so that we can take a look at it. I would suggest that we bring them back and, or bring them, I would suggest, let me back up. I would suggest that we take a look at the resumes, maybe narrow it down to two individuals and ask them to come in and interview.
Why not do an RFP?
Time?
Yeah. What, what would an RFP do?
Well, at least it would make us think, and similar to what Bob has done on this other one, to write down what we're, at least it would make us think and write down what we're looking for this individual to do for, beyond just be the ethics officer. I think we have a, an issue at hand.
Well, there's a, I guess I'm, I'm looking at it two ways, Brian. I'm looking at getting the examiner in on a specific potential violation of our code. I think that council also needs to consider having someone appointed so that you already know who to call upon if you have an ethics problem. So to me, you go out for an RFP for the latter. The, the first one, get somebody in now, and based on the individuals and what I know of the law firms that you were talking about, I think you have viable, a viable candidate pool, but it's, how quickly do you want to progress on it?
I'm more used to, is this, is this a contract for professional services or a contract for, if it's a contract for professional services, public works, who's the most qualified? Let's go negotiate price. Okay? But I, I guess if for the near term, if, if it's the sense of the council, I can go with, let's review resumes and get somebody in here.
Yeah, I'd like to see us just review resumes. I think, especially for this position, if, if we can look at their resumes and know what their rates are, I think that, the job that they're going to do is spelled out in our municipal code, isn't that correct?
Correct.
So I think the, an RFP where we were perhaps getting information about scope of work isn't needed, I think, here. We really just need to evaluate the individual, I think, and the rate, and pick one.
No, you went a different way, though. So it, as far as getting an individual to look at our current situation-
Yeah.
-I'm willing to go do resumes review, pick one, and let's move forward. As far as long-term engagement and fulfilling position, I'd rather do an RFP-
I'm sorry, Council, I have to interrupt for one second. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting past 10 o'clock?
Second.
Motion, a second, to extend past 10 o'clock. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Finish your sentence.
No, I'm-
I'm with you. I meant that.
You meant that, okay. We're in agreement.
So, maybe I was misunderstanding. My assumption was that even for the, the immediate matter at hand, that the council would want an appointment from the mayor and confirmation of the person to serve as, in the role anticipated by code, and then to, in that role, examine potential breach of the provisions of the city's ethics code.
If we're going to short-circuit the process, I have no problem with that person coming in as a ethics officer for the issue at hand. For long-term engagement, we should do the RFP.
Sorry, so just to-
I would agree with what Brian's saying in terms of, if you're going to combine the two, you use an RFP process. If we're willing to bring in somebody to just look at the one issue, great, let's get them in sooner versus later, and then go out with an RFP to actually have somebody do a scope of work around what our code says, so that we have that individual identified going forward.
So with respect to just the person that we're going to hire for the immediate matter, are we comfortable, rather than the council looking at resumes, are we comfortable with the mayor nominating someone, which I take it is what the, our municipal code actually calls for?
Correct.
Are we comfortable with the mayor nominating someone as, and then the council confirming that person, and therefore that would speed up the process?
As is typical in any appointment.
I'm not.
Well, I'd like to maybe compromise of send us the resumes, Matt, pick someone, recommend next time, and let's have a discussion based on the backdrop of those resumes, and Matt's recommendation saying this individual. And we can move forward to the next council.
I guess I don't understand why, so over the next, we don't meet again for two weeks, right? So then get our, get those four or five resumes, right? Send around to council. We do our due diligence, we read them, we do whatever research you want to do on the Internet, right? And we come to a consensus on, maybe two, I don't know, three, have them in, and we go through the interview or Q and A process.
Can I make a, a- Go ahead.
The only issue is offline, we can't come to a decision.
So-
Correct.
Um, do I want to propose this? I'll propose it. So when we were looking for a city attorney, I was the only council member that participated in the interview process. And so I'm wondering if perhaps instead of making this a full council interview process that we appoint one or two to meet with the candidates and help formally formulate the recommendation and move forward so that you still have council participation. I know three out of the four organizations that Bob is mentioning, and they're, they're very solid firms. So, you know, I have a comfort level just because of that, but this is going to bleed over into 2018, so you guys need to decide how you're going to, what do you want to do?
What do you envision the long-term scope's going to look like? We have an immediate need, but what's, what's the long-term? What's that going to look like?
Well, I think that's already scoped out in the RCW, or on, not the RCW, the Snoqualmie Municipal Code already has a scope in it.
But isn't that a person that essentially is like a hearing commissioner, where, you know, as you, as you need them?
Wait a minute, guys, so why don't we do separation of concerns? Let's worry about the long-term position and RFP later. Right now, let's worry about, let's get a consultant in for the immediate issue. It's just past 10 o'clock, that's all.
To be clear about Councilmember Ross's question, so I can't recall in 18 years that we've exercised the need for an ethics officer, so it's not going to be, I don't anticipate, I don't anticipate a lot of activity, I guess, even in picking one long-term, so.
Okay.
So I, I'm comfortable with Catherine's, oh, sorry, with Kathy's proposal. Pick three of us would need to be.
Yeah. And so, if I could just ask, Mayor, I, I know there's a process involving the mayor making an appointment, but do you have any concern with holding your appointment until the council or those three members have expressed their thoughts to you?
I, I don't. I can appreciate that Councilmember Sunwall is trying to keep the administration from top to bottom sort of clear of any influence on how this is being done. I'm, I'm certainly not personally implicated in anything, but I guess that could be construed that way, so I'm happy to oblige that. I mean, typically, the executive, this would be the executive branch's role to make a pick and have it confirmed by council, but it's not-
This is the, my feeling is, is to benefit you-
Yeah, I understand. That's why I said-
And the whole process, right?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to-
So it's like, I think, an extenuating circumstance where, it's, I think if the optics are just better for everyone to do it that way.
So, uh-
So you know the three of you, we're going to-
Point to cause all that to happen.
Which, which three of you are going to reach out to? Sean, you pretty much already self-selected.
Those poor people.
Jim, you want to do that? Catherine? The three of you are most available, actually, right offhand. Catherine, Jim, Sean.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out some way of-
Yeah. And Bob's gone, so you, you three fine with that?
It's fine.
All right, so we'll have-
So I can't do the day's-
Bob will reach out to the three of you and kind of coordinate how to do that.
Sean and Jim. Jim.
All right.
And, and so the normal process is that-
And I'm sorry, I hope I didn't, I didn't pollute it by selecting the council members.
No.
You got to do something, Mayor. Got to let you do something.
It is who I would have suggested if he'd given me a moment to try to formulate the diplomatic way of-
Right, yeah. Well, just because I know that you and Brian are slammed all day long at work, and there's a little more flexibility in their schedules.
Would the normal process for appointing a hearing examiner and other positions like this, the person would not begin work until the council had confirmed that? Or would it be normal for them to begin work before that?
You'd have to confirm.
All right. So what we can do then is seek to have these interviews completed, recommendation made, the mayor making a nomination, is that the correct word?
Appointment.
An appointment at the next council meeting, right?
Okay, the full council confirms the appointment.
I, I do think it's important, both because we need a resolution to this, and because the employees involved need a resolution to this. This needs to be resolved quickly.
Right. And some of those phone interview stacks, but I'm going to probably be done over the phone with a conference call or something, so, okay.
Mayor, I have one more item. I, city council retreat, it's not that far off. I, I actually, I need to poll the members that are here tonight, and I'll, I'll poll the other, well, the new members that come on council, but looking for your availability. We typically had the, the retreat some, in the, somewhere in the timeframe, after January but before March, I guess in February. But we're looking at late January this year, or back in 2018. So we're looking at any business trips, any vacations, any other issues that are going to be popping up for, for the council members as they sit here, and I'll, I'll poll the others as well. There's two in the audience, I think, I think will be joining us. And also looking at March. February, this, this 2018 is going to be very difficult with accommodating the mayor's calendar, so we, we need to work around that.
What days do you usually have it?
We try to have it, as of more recently, we've had it later in the week, but it's-
It's usually a two-day retreat. We do try to build in that it's three-quarters of a day, just because the majority of us were working, and it's hard to juggle. It is really important, and all of these years, last year was the first year that I could not attend, and I will tell you, it puts you behind the curve. So the staff does a really good job in terms of trying to set a date that everybody's available, and it's, I just try to stick with it as much as you possibly can. I had some last-minute business issues that came up that prevented me from being there, and I really felt the effects. I know, Brian, you missed part of it this year.
Not there with you.
And I felt like I was, in many respects, a brand-new council member for about a month and a half afterwards because of the conversation that happened at the retreat that I didn't hear and even know. You know, I know the topics, I didn't hear the details, and it's really important. So usually, it was a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday combination this last week. I believe we even went a Thursday, Friday combination. week, I believe we even went a Thursday, Friday combination.
Right, I'll try to avoid snowstorms.
Yeah, it is meant to be, it is meant to be, you know, usually I have my laptop from work and the laptop from the city, so you kind of play a little game in terms of juggling what your responsibilities are, but it's really important that you're there and I think you guys have a lot of important topics to talk about.
Our numbers were, I'm sorry, our numbers were rather decimated last year from the council in terms of presence and so we concluded maybe for the first time we would have to consider going into a weekend, Saturday or Sunday or both, if that was more convenient for everybody to finally free up time and commit to being there.
So the third weekend, the third week in February, I cannot do anything but.
February'd be out actually.
Yeah, so I think.
February's completely out?
Yes.
Where are you going?
Korea.
Do you, do you need to be there?
Yeah.
At the retreat?
Oh.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, I don't need to, I can, I can conference in.
Oh, yeah, right.
Be two in the morning for me.
March gets very difficult for me, but we'll figure it out.
Trust me, about three o'clock in the morning, you start losing your thread of thought, so don't do that.
I was thinking, considering the, there's newer members of the council, going to be the turn of the year, it might be more important to have it late January, third or fourth week in January.
You know, and one thing we've never considered but, and you might want to do it this time, is split it up into several perhaps days because of information overload. We were able to go through a lot of topics and a lot of jumping from topic to topic because we didn't have to spend a lot of time on the background. I would imagine this time you might want to, so you might want to do, say, a financial retreat day in January followed up with some of the other topics when Matt's back and can come up with a day here and there versus.
Are you concerned though that the continuity between everything would be lost?
Not really, because a lot of times the topics are very separate in terms of what you're looking at and they're kind of, you can kind of group them. It might take a little bit more finesse, but it also might afford you the opportunity to, you know, one of the things I was suggesting is the reserve conversation, it might, might give you the ability to start a conversation and then come back and dig further into it. So there are some pluses to splitting the days up.
Well, January is wide open for me, March gets very difficult.
Uh-huh.
Coaching?
Yeah, yeah.
Go for January.
All right. I'll take a look at late January, preferably later in the week, it sounds like would be better. We got committee meetings on Mondays and Tuesdays.
Matt, January, Matt and Peggy, January, work for you guys?
Late January.
Yes, definitely late.
Weekday weekend?
The Cougars won't be in a near Z Bull, so you can go sooner than late January, can't you?
That's mean. That's just mean.
I have a day job and so I prefer a weekend day at least for one or two days.
Okay.
It was a Friday, Saturday, I'd be fine with that.
I'll take a look at that as well.
Yeah.
All right, that may be where, if we work out for late January too. All right, thank you.
So I just, there's one thing that, I don't know, went, just seeing if I'm getting texts about when I'm available. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're going to get ultimately a report, which I'm hoping is in writing, on the, the concerns that have been raised.
Bob's going to speak to that next, once we're good with this.
Okay, good.
We will draft a report, I'm working with the city attorney on some of the expectations, but we'll get that to you.
Thank you.
On which issue though?
On this, on the specific concerns raised around the Billington contract.
Yeah, the advance contract.
Okay, will that include the state auditor? They, you said they're auditing it, so will we get the results from that too?
I'll, I'll give you a status report as I, as I'm aware of it, I, I would expect that they're not going to divulge anything until they've completed their audit, but we can certainly ask them that before I submit the report to council.
Good.
There might be some preliminary findings they may be willing to share.
Okay, anything else, Bob?
Nothing further, mayor.
Are there any other items for committee, the whole? All right, staff reports are written for the first meeting of the month, however, at this time, are there any other questions for or from the staff? Dan Marcinco, surprise.
All right, so tomorrow, I knew we had a bid opening for the Park's Public Works largest project and the mayor informed me it's the city's. So our wastewater.
History of the city.
Two, the history of the city. Phase two, 11 o'clock tomorrow will be the wastewater construction opening. And then the ice skate.
How many bits have you gotten back so far?
I don't know yet, we'll find out, we'll look tomorrow, 10:45. None as far as I'm aware, they usually come right at the last minute.
I know they come usually same day.
Right, the morning of. And with the power outages we've had, we've had a couple of concerns.
How many companies have pulled the bid specifications?
I don't, I didn't look, I don't know. Well, I shouldn't say that, last I looked was about four days ago, there were five companies that pulled, so there, I'm sure there's more now. Any other questions? No? Ice skating rink, we're going to start putting it up next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, with the opening on Saturday after Thanksgiving and we are going to put it on King Street Lot and because of cost and time, we're not going to move it up to the rich, we're going to leave it on King Street and we're going to have one person doing the day duty.
It's going to go on the, the gravel parking lot?
King Street.
The, on the street itself?
Oh, you said the lot.
Maple.
I thought he said King Street Lot.
Oh, I did say the lot.
I was going to say, where is everyone going to park?
No, sorry, King Street between 202 and Maple, like we have every year, and have one person manning the ice skating rink and then we're not going to have any charge for the ice skating rink and we're, in hopes that this is going to increase the usage of the ice skating rink.
So no charge for the ice skating rink this year?
Correct.
What about the skates?
No charge for the skates.
Because you can't use regular skates, right?
Pardon?
You can't use regular skates, you have to use your skates.
You can use your regular ice skates.
They can?
Yeah, that's what we have.
You can use your own.
Oh, okay.
Do you have some?
I was thinking they're built differently for the non-ice.
You may not want, you may not want hockey skates on that polymer.
No, they're fine.
No, no, hockey skates are fine.
You use regular skates, hockey or figure.
Don't do it, Brian.
In fact, the figure skates are probably worse because they have the teeth in the front to chew that plastic up. Hockey skates are smooth on the front.
All right.
They're sharper edge, but.
I, I do have one question for you not related to skating. Can you give us a quick update on where we are in the Hawk signal?
On the Fisher Hawk?
Mm-hmm.
Still waiting on Wash Dot, we're hoping to have that by the beginning of next week, Monday, so at committee, I'm hoping I can have some good news for you guys.
When you go to bid, because we haven't taken out the bid yet, right?
Correct.
When you go to bid, I think I've talked about this before, I would, I for one would like to see what a bid would be on a full stoplight there. It's been a couple of years since we've actually gotten a bid, not just that what it would a stoplight cost, but what would a stoplight cost there, given some of the underground infrastructures already there.
We can, we can do that via, with the contractor that would win the bid or we can, there's also been, there's numerous traffic signals that have been awarded through the Northwest that we can pull.
Right, but I want to make sure that we're not including costs of work that has already been done by Quadrant.
Right, agreed, agreed.
And I also want it, because I, I want to, once we build a Hawk signal there, it becomes more difficult to build a full signal there, because we'll use some of the money that Quadrant used for the Hawk signal, right?
Correct.
So I want to have that information at a time.
Okay.
So, and I think you should, or somebody should review the warrants on that, because the warrants don't support putting a signal there.
Understood, and we can, we're happy to have that re-review, but it's.
And you have all that information, correct?
I do, I do.
I did provide that.
Yep.
Right. I just, as a point of order, just want to remind that, got to be careful not to have a single council member sort of directing, is there a concurrence from the majority of the council to, to take that additional step or?
I agree.
I already asked him to. Okay.
Dan, pull, we had discussions about, we had a bid package for Grant, right, one time?
Correct.
I just pull that. I mean, I'm sorry, I'm reluctant to re.
You're reluctant to have like, somebody who's already going to be bidding a, one contract to just say what it would cost to build a full stoplight there?
Well, I have a.
No, I think we've already done that analysis per the bid package we did prior.
So here's my problem. If the intersection doesn't warrant a full stoplight, it doesn't warrant a full stoplight and those funds that we would have to, to find somewhere need to be spent in other areas, in my opinion. If you've ever tried to get onto Railroad Avenue at 4:30 or 5 o'clock around here, it's next to impossible and I suspect that we should probably have some sort of potential signal, not a full signal, but something. So that's where I'm concerned, if, if the warrants don't support it, I'm not sure we want to spend the extra money to put a full.
Maybe not, but I'm asking, it's been two years since we revisited, since we visited it and we have almost, well, four new council members since that was decided, right? And traffic has gotten heavier and I would just like us to revisit it. The Better Way intersection did not have, pass all the warrants either and the reason that got built is because the developer paid for every penny.
No, the reason why you have a stoplight at that intersection is because the fire station is at the.
There are many fire stations that have a flashing yellow that will go red.
Our council, for the, this is about a 45-minute to an hour-long discussion.
I'm just asking that we are, I'm just asking to reopen it tonight.
I, I know, I'm just going to suggest that we put this conversation off to the next council meeting or at least have some conversations at committee level. I'm just concerned we're going to be here till midnight if we open this conversation because I think there's a lot of questions about, you can't just bid an alternate without having some designs that they would actually use to do.
So the only thing I want to settle on tonight is that I'm not going to be shut down and talking about this.
No, I don't think anyone's suggesting that at all.
Okay.
So.
I felt, what, here's what I felt like, I felt like this has already been decided, let's stop talking about it. And I'm not, I don't want to stop talking about it, not tonight.
What's time-sensitive right now, Dan? You'll be getting some news, it'll go to committee, I mean, this could be kicked along for two or three council meetings before a decision's made to actually execute.
So why don't we?
It's not time-sensitive, correct?
No, but Sean, let me work with my members of the Public Works Committee and have you swap in and we, we can go through, I'm willing to review history, I'm not willing to open up the whole process because if we keep doing it, we'll never get anywhere. In part, the decision has been made, we've got money to go do the Hawk signal. Let's, let's review the warrants and the, the cost figures we had prior in regards to that and the comparison between signal and Hawk. Have no issue with doing that. I'm just, reviewing history, perfectly okay. Reopening the whole issue, we might as well throw the Hawk signal out. I'd rather get going on this.
I mean, Sean, it sounds like you're, you're just wanting to confirm that, taking into account the work that was already installed by Quadrant, that the price of a full signal station doesn't come in slightly north of a Hawk signal, that you could almost do it for the same price.
What I'm suggesting is the bid that I saw and the bid that was proposed by another member of the community are wildly different. So my hunch is they're probably somewhere in the middle. So I want a bid on our intersection, not what a generic intersection would cost, because my understanding is Quadrant put stuff underneath that wouldn't need to be paid for again, that in the original bid was counted in that bid, a half a million or whatever it was. And so I, I'm just asking that we look at our intersection, not some generic off-the-shelf intersection.
All right, and some of those questions might, Dan might have details for already, if you, if you could discuss the public.
Yeah.
Park Public Works Committee meeting and review, there's, in other words, there's probably a lot more information you might not have, but then there might be gaps as you're suggesting.
Let me, let me ask Heather, if you're on, if she'll swap out with you next Monday, Public Works meeting.
I won't be here, but, I won't be here, but.
Okay, the one after that?
Sure.
Okay.
Or Dan, you could do a deep dive at some point at Sean's convenience, whether, to get to some of the heart of some of those questions, whether those details are there or whether, as he understands it, is it, as you, as it was done or, you know.
Sure.
Now, we, to get everybody on the same page factually before you want to proceed, before you do want to still proceed, but by no means am I trying, I'm just, I'm not trying to shut anybody down, it's just.
I'm, I'm done talking about it for tonight, I just didn't want to be shut down and have it never be open again.
Yeah.
And I, I do make the offer to committee, if nothing else, so that we're in the light of day and nobody thinks we took you in the back room and had a discussion.
Oh, if you took me in the back room, I have a feeling you'd hurt me, or you'd hurt me, so I'm all afraid of being in the light too.
All right.
All right, this just got briefer, 90 seconds. City of Snoqualmie, city of North Bend, Meadow Brook Preservation Board, University of Washington. City, the city of Snoqualmie, city of North Bend, jointly owned Meadow Brook Farm, 25 years, under an interlocal agreement. They paid for a business plan with Tom Beckwith and got a PowerPoint and an unfinished business plan. We applied at U-Dub for foster school business, graduate students, and were accepted. Today, we found out we were assigned five graduate students, four our first year, one is second year, and advisors. And the importance of tonight is the first time I can, or the last time I can update you before we actually get started. December 1st, we all meet at, at U-Dub, meet the students, their quarter starts January 8th, so in January, February and March, they'll assist both cities and the Meadow Brook Board to flesh out a business plan that we could call a business plan. After that, we will be in our next biannual budget discussion, so it'll be reflected there and at the city of North Bend and that'll lead to renegotiation of the interlocal agreement, which would give us two years to do that and not wait till the end. So the good news is we have help for free.
So just for the new folks, the structure of the Meadow Brook Farm Agreement is pretty, it's basically based in an FTE that no longer exists and so who pays what between North Bend and Snoqualmie has been a discussion point for the last 10 years. And then also, you know, it, there, there is a certain element that they could be sustainable on their own revenues or a lot closer to being sustainable on their own revenues than they are and they struggle with being an interpretive center versus a revenue generating facility, which I completely understand, I'm not trying to downplay that at all, but this business plan really helps kind of solidify kind of what they should become to be able to renegotiate that agreement. Did I say it right, Mark?
That's correct. Thank you.
All right, there's no other staff reports then, any other announcements before we go into executive session tonight?
Just to let some people know, there's some power outage in the city.
Yep, at least up on Fairway.
I got power.
And Laurel.
All right. Are there any citizens who wish to comment? Peggy?
Sorry. Regarding the Fisher intersection, I know that the application that was submitted for, I think it's the PSRC grant of $175,000, indicates or references the petition that was circulated around the communities surrounding that intersection and claiming that that was what they wanted was a Hawk signal when in fact they did not sign the petition for a Hawk signal. So it was misrepresented as far as that application.
No one made that claim, Peggy, her.
I saw the application.
All right.
I got it from PSRC.
All right, does anyone else would like to comment? Richard?
Different subject now that, you know, I know last time I got up, I forgot that it was on a particular topic now. So I just wanted to mention the, the comments earlier about public, access to public information. So I know, I, I hadn't been aware there was the distinction between public records requests and information requests, but the one thing I did want to point out is you had mentioned to Peggy that as a incoming council member, that she'll find she has access to a lot of information, but as a individual citizen, I think we all need to have access, better access to the types of information that she had listed at various times in emails to the city. Not just to council members, but, you know, citizens in general should have access to things that are records. I've, I've seen the emails she had, most of them were for actual records.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sheehan. To clarify my comments, as, what I said is as a council member, assuming she can get a majority of her associate council members to agree with her, the council can direct my staff or myself to, to create whatever kind of a report you want or create new information, do studies, surveys, whatever you want, that's the point I was making. That's the point I was making, that's the distinction. All the information that we have available, any citizen has a right to access that. You want my phone records, my emails, all of our reports, anything that's printed and unfiled with the city, that's available to the public. But what we're not able, what we're not obligated to do to any particular citizen is to produce reports, produce studies that don't already exist. I hope you can appreciate that the, the citizens of the city are not expecting that, that any citizen should be able to walk in and sort of co-op the resources of, of their city for whatever purposes that citizen wants. I mean, that's what elections are about, to elect representatives, to use those resources. That's what I was making there. Dan, did you want to respond to the PSRC application? To look at that? Okay, I'd, I'd be interested in having a report back on that item, so, 'cause I'm not familiar with it myself.
Dan, if you could circulate that to council, that would be great, whatever you come up with.
All right, thank you. Any other citizens to come in tonight? All right, with that, at this time, we're gonna go into, into two executive sessions, one regarding litigation pursuant to RCW 42.30.110, print one, print lowercase i. We also will be entering into an executive session regarding potential litigation according to RCW 42.30.110, section one, lowercase i, double lowercase i. The executive sessions are expected to last approximately 10 minutes, and there may be action following. And no action following on the second item, just a, an update. Okay, so with that, everyone else can go home and enjoy their evening and get a good night's rest.